I'm going to call to order the Monday, November tenth, 2025 meeting of the Concord City Council. Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Counselor Brown, here.
Mayor Champlin.
Here.
Counselor Fennessy.
Present.
Counselor Foote.
Present.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Here.
Counselor Horn.
Here.
Counselor Keach.
Here.
Counselor Kretovic.
Here.
Counselor Kurtz.
Present.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor McNamara.
Here.
Counselor Schlosser.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Seku.
Present.
And Counselor Todd.
Here.
Excellent, thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the city council minutes of the October fourteenth, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, the minutes are adopted. Like to now go pass things over to the city clerk for the canvas of the votes for municipal election held on November fourth, 2025.
Thank you. So in follow-up to the November fourth municipal election, I ask counsel to canvass the votes cast, declaring the following candidates elected as they receive the highest number of votes. So for the office of mayor, Mayor Champlin was reelected. The at-large counselors Amanda Grady Sexton and Counselor Fred Keach were reelected. In wards one, two, and three, the incumbents Counselor Todd, Counselor Horn, and Counselor Kretovic were reelected. In Ward four, Mark Davie, who is in the audience, was elected to fill a vacancy. Ward five, Stacy Brown was reelected. Ward six, Aislinn Kalab is in the audience as well as a new, soon-to-be-new member of council. Ward seven, Counselor Schlosser was reelected. And Ward eight, Counselor Seku was reelected. Ward nine, Counselor Kurt, Schultz, excuse me, was reelected. And in, I love that.
Not as much as I do, Madam Clerk.
And Ward ten, Counselor Foote was reelected. And then attached to your report, you will see the various ward officials that were either elected or reelected to their positions.
Very good. Do we need a motion to accept the canvas?
Yes, please.
I'll, moved and seconded, any discussion? Counselor Kurtz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to publicly thank everyone who put their hat out there to run. And also, the individuals who we did not name, but who serve essential roles in the city. And often, we don't know their names or see them. But, you know, ward moderators, clerks, supervisors of checklists, they're responsible for assuring that we have free and fair elections along with our amazing city clerks. So just want to express gratitude to all of those folks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Schlosser.
Many volunteers.
Yes.
There were just dozens and dozens of volunteers contributed their time to make the elections smooth, so.
Yeah, and we rely on all of them. Ready, Counselor Sekul.
I just want to say, Your Honor, I get few people reaching out to me in our community of immigrants saying that this is the most smooth process they ever went through. They bring their people, they ask to go help them, and they did express themselves by voting. So I cannot commend it enough to the city clerk and city administration and everybody involved in this process for making this process easy. And congratulations to everybody that got elected and kudos to everybody that ran for office. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. To pivot to another subject, the fan upstairs here just turned on. Could you make your announcement about hearing aids and hearing devices in the room, please?
Thank you, Counselor. For reminding me, yes, we do have hearing assistance devices available in the back of the room through, which Mike usually waves so that you can see him back there. Thank you, Mike. At the Concord TV booth, these are earphones that will allow you to augment your hearing during our session. Thank you, Counselor. Are we ready for the vote? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Canvas is accepted. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. This brings us to the consent calendar. We have one item which has been pulled from consent, that is item number twenty. All other items are, remain on the consent calendar.
I think there are more than that, I think it's just the rule.
Two of them were withdrawn.
Okay.
Two of them were placed back on the consent, on the consent calendar.
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. This brings us to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Could I ask, through a show of hands, how many people are here to testify on the police station item? All right, fine. I'm going to move that item up to the front, to the top of the public hearing agenda to facilitate all of you. Madam City Clerk, that would take us to item thirty L, I believe.
You are correct.
Thank you.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of forty-five million, five hundred thousand dollars in the Police Headquarters Project, CIP six forty-three, for the construction of the new police department building and authorizing the issuance of general fund, general obligation bonds and notes in the sum of forty-five million, five hundred thousand dollars for this purpose.
Thank you. Counselor Brown, you're recusing yourself on this, right?
Your Honor, I believe I would like to participate. My husband is not a construction worker. This is not something that is material or direct. And I feel I should participate in this.
Counsel, I don't believe you can.
I disagree, Your Honor.
Under the city charter, the City of Concord, New Hampshire, section fifty-three states that no elective or appointive officer or employee of the city shall take part in a decision concerning the business of the city in which the officer or employee has a financial interest aside from salary, as such, direct or indirect, greater than any other citizen or taxpayer. The city's ethics ordinance, specifically ordinance number three-one-four-five, amending Article one-six, section one-six-three defines conflict of interest to include situations in which an elected official's family member is employed by a city department that is directly affected by the matter before the public body. It states that for city employment, a conflict of interest shall only arise when the matter before the public body involves the department of which the officer or elected official's family member is employed. Also, council rules, Rule six A and six B, affirm that counselors must comply with the ethics ordinance and that any potential conflict of interest must be declared before discussion begins. And the mayor or presiding officer rules initially, and the council may vote on the eligibility of the counselor.
I request a vote, Your Honor.
All right, Counselor Brown requests a vote.
Before we vote, though, I have a question because I think as a responsible counselor, and this is my statement, if she feels that she doesn't have any conflict, I personally will vote no. I will let her judge based on what. I just want to share that because I think it's very important for all of us. We have something in front of us to know what is an ethics, what is a conflict of interest based on what you just read. If she feel comfortable to do so, I'll vote no on this.
Okay. Are we ready for the vote? All those, Counselor Fennessy.
I was just asking for clarification. So if I understand correctly, Counselor Brown is challenging the rule of the chair.
The chair, correct.
So if we support the ruling of the chair, are you voting yes or no?
You're voting yes.
Thank you.
So yes, to support the ruling of the chair, that a conflict exists. A no indicates that you disagree with the ruling of the chair.
Roll call.
Counselor Brown calls for a roll call. Madam Clerk.
We will start with Counselor Brown.
No.
Mayor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy.
Yes.
Counselor Foote.
Obstain.
I don't think you can.
I don't think you can.
All members present must vote.
I'll vote yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Horn.
No.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Kurtz.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor McNamara.
Yes.
Counselor Schlosser.
No.
Counselor Schultz.
No.
Counselor Seku.
No.
And Counselor Todd.
Yes.
So the motion passes ten to five.
Thank you. All right, Mr. City Manager.
So, Your Honor, members of the council, I'd ask Beth Benz-Markert to present. And then she has a small piece to present, and then I have a small piece to present. And then I'd suggest you open it up to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you all received a copy of this presentation so you can follow along. We also have it up on the website. If anybody at home or in the audience wants to follow along, the project website, conquerednh.gov/newpolicestation, and under quick links, so that people can zoom a little bit more as we go through some of the numbers. So thank you for the opportunity to present again tonight as part of the public hearing. Just going to give you a brief update from some questions we received since October meeting. And I don't plan to repeat everything that we've said so far. I have a whole team of people back here for questions as they come up tonight. There's been hundreds and hundreds of hours from all these team members that have worked on this project over the past year. So where your resource is, there's only so much we can fit in a presentation. So please take advantage of everybody being here tonight. Okay, so one of the questions that has been brought up is about the projections in staffing and how we came up with the design and how do we, how we built in for the future growth. So it's very difficult to predict the future of how it's going to grow and for the next fifty years. We're trying to create a fifty-year and beyond building so the city doesn't have to go through this again anytime soon. And you could talk to the chief or anybody else in the police department and realize that we're someplace where we didn't even predict we'd be fifteen years ago. So through that complexity of predicting the future, we've built a lot of flexibility into the building itself. And just an example, here is a space, these are all office spaces with non-structure-bearing walls. So in the future, if this department doesn't grow as projected, another department, say, if social work becomes the more important, larger group within the division in fifteen years, then we can restructure this area for minimal cost and not a lot of impact to the building itself. So that's one way that we've addressed that flexibility in the design. We've also included shell spaces throughout the building. So it's, we have some areas, this sort of blank space right here, which represents about four hundred square feet of shell area that won't be fully built out. And those are sprinkled throughout the building. Again, that flexibility for different departments that grow at different rates, so it's not all in one chunk area as future growth area. And then putting conduits, which are just chases in the walls for future wiring or any other conduits that we, wiring or electricity or anything else that we'd need to put into these spaces. So it's future-proofing the building to save money in the long run. What did I say about that? We'll get to the money part. So just a reminder, this is the cost estimate. We have not changed any cost estimates since October. Where we're at for the construction of the building, this does not include, this cost right here is not everything, including the acquisition and the design fees, but we're at about forty-five point five million dollars, and that's the amount that we're requesting for the bond resolution to be approved. So we've talked about different ways of how we could save money on this project. We did this project by hiring a construction manager at the very beginning of the process so we could learn about challenges that we would have, buildability issues, and that would help us with upfront cost savings. So here's a list of some items that, to date, we have saved, so they're not included in that forty-five point five million dollar price range. So an interior fire range, initially part of the project, that was a pretty expensive proposition. So we immediately eliminated that from the project. A communication center, so where all the radios and everything comes out is currently in Thirty-Five Green Street. We have decided not to move that. That's about a two million dollar savings. So by the city maintaining it at Thirty-Five Green Street, we're able to shave off about a two million dollars. If in the future, this is a question about phasing, in the future, we can move that if that's something, if there's a different use for the Thirty-Five Green Street building, then that's a two million dollar project in the future. Changing the glass curtain wall to aluminum composite material, that's savings upfront, but also long-term savings with energy efficiency. Exterior bricks changed to concrete masonry units. And this was part of having the construction manager up front, they're able to go out to subs and say, how much is this going to cost at this point, and comparing that. So already twenty-five thousand dollars approximately. These are sort of order of magnitude costs. We've talked a lot about NFPA requirements and category four requirements. Some of them are flexible that the city can make determinations on. So if we followed it to the letter of the law, three generators would be required. We've made decisions that we're able to meet the requirements by only having one generator, and there's other backups that we can make. So that saves about a hundred thousand dollars in space on the site. Redesigning the elevator, again, that was input from the construction manager being part of the project really early on to change the design and relocate the elevator so we could avoid this corner post elevator. Changing the surround of the generator to a cheaper material, eliminating a Faraday room, which was previously talked about, eliminating the need for commercial kitchen ventilation upgrades by removing an oven in the kitchen, which was significant savings, and then reducing scope of electric doors. But again, leaving conduits in so in the future, we can add that back in if we need to. So that's about seven million dollars upfront saved, but also by virtue of buying an existing building and making that decision, which council made in April of twenty-four, to reuse it and build an addition. At that time, the cost estimates were about a six million dollar difference. But if we demoed the building, built completely brand-new, it's possible it would have been even more expensive than what we're building now. So by making the decision to put part of this building as an existing, part of this facility within the existing building, we're saving approximately six million, six million dollars upfront. Again, these were value engineering items that we talked about last month and that were in the report. And I just broke it out a little bit different because we're at the point where we need to make some design decisions. The first five items have implications with mechanical, structural, HVAC. Those are decisions that we need to make now if we're going to remove those from the scope. And all these other items, we can add back in at the end if the council wants to choose, elect to remove those at this point. And then as we go through the design process, we can elect to put those back in. So I think with that, I'm going to pass it on to Tom.
Thank you, Beth. So this, this chart here is what you essentially saw as part of your October fourteenth discussion, except for what we did was we took it out another year, from twenty thirty to twenty thirty-one, and eliminated fiscal year twenty twenty-five, just so you have a little bit more information. But you can see the numbers and the impacts right here. And I, and really, we're going to use the four hundred thousand dollar assessed value property when I discuss this, and that's what you used for your tax rate discussions. So that's for the purposes of this discussion. But we also showed the two fifty and the five hundred thousand dollar piece, so. So what you recall at the October fourteenth discussion, the, we looked at doing a design bond sale in January, this coming January, for twenty-five-year term bonds at three and a half percent. And there was going to be two issuances. One would be in January twenty-six, one would be in twenty-seven, splitting the cost in half to nineteen million and twenty-six point five million with twenty-five-year payment return, term at three and a half percent. So that, again, that is what we started with, looking at. And the reason I bring this up is we're looking at different methodologies of how to save money and change some of the assumptions that were made here. Again, everything that I'm going to bring to you tonight, you can pick and choose what you want to do. If it doesn't make any sense to you, just ignore it. But I think all in all, you can take it as a package or you can take them individually, so Beth, you can go. So looking at this, and I'll just go over this as an initial part, and then I'll break each piece of the down. So what you're going to see here, under the proposed construction bond issuance, right in the middle, you're going to see the proposed construction issuance of one, two, and three issuance instead of two issuance. And what we've done there, you're going to also see just below that, this, again, the middle section, the top piece, where it says already appropriated, that is all the same. We're not changing any of that. If you decide that you want to change the overall costs, then you'd look at that. But what I'm, the approach that I'm taking is how are you going to finance this and how can you maximize your savings going forward? So I want you, what we'll be talking about as we go forward is proposed construction bond issuances. And also, if you go down from there, you're going to see in italics, "use of community improvement reserve and use of fund balance." So again, I'm going to focus on each one of those as we go through. So looking, looking at the bond sale, so if you changed based on, if the numbers I'm going to show you, if you changed it from a twenty-five-year bond to thirty-year bonds for the first two, the issuance one and two, you'd still be at three and a half percent. And what I'm suggesting is that you take that two issuances and make it three, where you do nineteen million in twenty twenty-six, which is the same as what we suggested, but taking the twenty-six point five million to make it a twenty million bond in twenty twenty-seven and a six and a half in twenty twenty-eight. The reason for that is, if you recall, when you look at the details of the numbers, it was about three point three million dollars for contingency. Because again, we're only at sixty percent design, so there's much, there's much more work to be done. Why go out and borrow those dollars if you, if you may not need them? So what I'm suggesting is you break this into three pieces, and you do that last piece, if you need to do it, and, and decide what you need to do. It may not be six and a half million. If it truly is contingency, it could only be three million. So why borrow the money and why pay the interest on it? Why pay the principal on it? Why have the tax rate impact on it if you can, if you could avoid that? So again, issuances one and two would be thirty-year bonds at three and a half percent. Issue with three would be a twenty-year repayment at three and a quarter percent. And then we would look at the community improvement reserve and the use of the fund balance as the next piece. So here, again, the top part, above the orange bar, is all the same. Now this breaks it down into three pieces. You see issuance one, issuance two, issuance three, and what those costs would be associated with, and how that impacts, and I'll show you when we get to the end, how that impacts the, the cost per, per taxpayer per year. So that, that's what that middle piece is, and that pretty dramatically changes your annual principal and interest payments going out over the next several years. Now, same, same chart, same as the chart, now look at the red bar. If you look at the red bar, you can see the use of the community improvement reserve in fiscal year twenty-seven and twenty-eight and twenty-nine. You remember, because the city was a housing champion, because of all the new housing that we brought into the community, we received a grant from the state. We used some of that grant dollars to clean up some of the homeless camps in the sites, but you still have one point one million dollars left. You could take that, and there's no purpose for those dollars right now. You have that sitting in a reserve. You could take that one point one million dollars, spend five hundred thousand dollars in twenty-seven, five hundred thousand in twenty-eight, and the remainder in twenty-nine. Or you could break it into any which way you want. You could three hundred thousand dollars a year for, you know, for three and a half years or four years. Again, and the goal is to reduce the total property tax impact rate in those years. Also, what I'm suggesting is you see below that, right above the bottom of the second red line, is the use of fund balance. You purposely, over the years, anticipating this project, have underspent your fund balance, and you're actually at about nine point seven percent of where you, your target, your target's ten to fourteen percent of appropriated. You're at, you're at about nine point seven percent. What you can do here is start using some of that fund balance. Why hold on to those dollars if you can use it to reduce the tax rate impact? So what I'm suggesting is using two hundred thousand dollars, as you can see So what I'm suggesting is using two-hundred thousand dollars, as you can see in twenty-seven, two-hundred thousand in twenty-eight, three-hundred and twenty-nine, three-hundred, three-hundred-and-fifty and thirty, and then start weaning yourself off that. This is a decision that you make each and every year. So if you have the dollars in there, the economy's going well, you can, you'll easily do this. You remember, the reason you built up the supply, when everybody else was increasing their tax rates during COVID, you came in with a zero percent tax rate increase, and everybody else, all the communities around us and other governmental agencies, were increasing their expenses to the taxpayer. You said, no, we're going to do zero percent. That gives you this flexibility to do this. So what I'm suggesting, you've rebuilt that flexibility, use it to reduce the tax rate impact. So with that, looking at, now combining both those numbers, Beth, go through. What does that mean? So if you did a bond issuance split of increase from two to three years, a repayment of twenty-five to thirty years, twenty years on the third year, use of the community improvement reserve and the fund balance, the tax rate impacts for these projects would be, you can see how many cents on here, so you'd go from, twenty-six is already baked in for that, but now you start borrowing in twenty-seven, you'd go from thirty-nine cents to twenty-three cents, eighty-four to fifty-six. As you can see, that dramatically reduces those impacts as years go out. Instead of having in twenty-seven, a hundred-and-fifty-seven-dollar impact on a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home, it would go down to ninety-two dollars. In twenty-eight, instead of having three-hundred-and-thirty-seven, it would go down to two-hundred-and-twenty-six, and then you can see it slowly starts to go down over time. One of the things to mention here, too, this is not like your home mortgage. This is, and sorry to jump on your idea, this was your idea, Mayor. So instead of like the home mortgage where you start paying principal interest payments and that number's the same, that goes out for thirty years, these numbers go down dramatically. So by the time you get to the end of the bond payment, your payments that we're putting out in principal interest is about half what they are at the beginning of the payment. So these numbers are going to start to decline steadily over time. So this is one approach you can take. Again, you can pick and choose any of these or none of these to dramatically reduce the impact of the tax rate on people if you decide to move forward with the project. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Did you want to go to the public hearing first?
Oh, no, from you.
From us, yes. Okay. I'm sorry, questions for the city manager. Council fantasy.
Thank you. I just had a question if, and maybe this is better for Brian, but if we're going to use the one-point-one million from the community development reserve or fund balance, is there a reason why we wouldn't use that all in one chunk to reduce the amount that we're actually going out to bond?
Yeah, I'd ask Brian to come up, but we have the same answer, so go ahead, Brian.
I don't know, you say it first, and I'll tell you if I have the same answer.
So I think trying to look at this in a measured approach, so, you know, there could be fluctuations from year to year in what happens with our fund balances, could be fluctuations in year to year in what you think you want to use, you know, from the community improvement reserve. So it still gives you the flexibility to be able to use, you know, each of them. I think the other part of it is when, if we take a million dollars or take, you know, nine-hundred thousand dollars out of that fund balance in addition to what we're already using, that starts to have the rating agency take a look at us and say, hey, what are you doing? And then, you know, if we use, the more that we use, the rating agency is going to say, you know, okay, you know, we see that you're now starting to decrease your fund balance on a greater level, so we're going to put you on a negative watch, or we're going to put you on a, you know, we're going to reduce your bond rating. When they do those kind of things, that increases the cost for us to go out and bond items, so we're going to have an increase in expenses. I can't tell you exactly where those triggers are, what those dollars amount are, but I think that if you use that measured approach, you have the year-to-year decision that you can make in order to be able to determine, you know, does this make sense? Could have a great year, you know, for auto registrations and building permits and all kinds of other things, so be able to add a little bit more to the fund balance, be able to manage it a little bit more, try to stay some ways within the, some ways within the goals that the city council has. You can change the goals, you know, you can do a lot of different things, but I think that if you, if you take, you know, it's like, it's like at home, if we take everything from one piece all at once, right, gives us a little bit less flexibility, but if we're able to manage it through a bunch of different things, then we have that flexibility or the council has flexibility from year to year.
Questions? Council, Tom.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, and also thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. LeBrun, for your work on this and calculating this out for us, giving us this option. My question is, beyond FY 2031, what is the, what are the amounts that residents can expect in terms of the option two, let's say, decreases? I think you referenced that it dramatically drops off. What, can you give us a sense of what that is?
I think if you take a look at, you know, if you continue to use some fund balance in order to make that work, you're going to see, be in a declining mode because the debt service is going to be declining a little bit over time. You know, like Tom said, you know, if you look at, you know, what the payment is the first year, you know, on a nineteen-million-dollar bond, the payment for the first year would be one-point-three million dollars, right? If you look at it in year twenty-nine, it's seven-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars. So you see that interest declining every year, the principal remains the same, the interest declines, so you see that decline in the amount that's going through, the amount to be raised in taxes for that given year.
So are we talking then about dropping from two-ninety-four to, is it two-hundred or ten? I mean, I was just trying to get a sense of how.
Yeah, it won't be that much. It won't be that much.
Won't be that much.
Right? So if you still, if you still use some fund balance, you know, you'll see it drop a little bit, you know, more measured. If you use, you know, if you decide not to use any fund balance, obviously, you're going to have a little bit of an uptick in that amount that you would have to raise because you're not using that fund balance. So it's really all, it all comes together each year. You'll have to take a look at it each year and see what that number is. It's not going to be a dramatic drop, you know, in the next year. It's going to be measured.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Council Flosser.
It's about the construction manager. I think I heard Ms. Fenstermacher, you say that the construction manager was able to identify some cost reductions that made sense. And I think in a prior handout, we had, construction manager was omitted. Does that make, does that, do we have a construction manager that we hire separately to help us manage this project and value engineer? Is that the case?
Yes, I think it, oh, sorry. It's possible, we already, you already appropriated money for the construction manager, so it was omitted from that cost estimate for construction because we already had that money appropriated under previous appropriations. But yes, Milestone has been under contract with us since prior to selection of the architects.
And may I? And so the benefit of that is that we have an experienced construction professional advising us when the designs come in, when the construction bids come in, about the logic and the cost benefit of some of those proposals to us. So sort of our aid negotiating some of these design, is that my understanding?
Correct, yep. So all the bids come through them, all the subcontractors will be through them, so they solicit the bids, and they work through that directly with the contractors where we don't necessarily have that experience. They are going to be building the building with them, so they have that expertise to work with.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Fenstermacher. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'll now open the public hearing, as anyone would like to testify.
You can choose whichever seat you want.
Thank you. Thank you for taking my question. My name is Tracy Brickie, and I am a resident of Pennacook. Or should I say Concord, mister?
You should say Pennacook.
I would say Concord.
I know you would. I know you would. It's a running soap. My question is about the community improvement reserve. Is that a grant that we have? And if it is a grant, how was it written? Was it written so that it could, I, in a former life, I wrote some grants, and I know that I couldn't change partway through what I was using those grant funds for if it wasn't actually put into the, into the body of the grant. So my question is, is it really something that we're going to be able to do? Is it going to be a real hard, is it going to be a process? And how much money is left in the grant? And how long will that, how long will we be able to use the community improvement reserve? Those were my questions.
Do you have an answer?
Yeah, I'm happy to. It's open-ended.
Sure. The, it's really an award that we got because we were a housing champion, so we can use for any purpose we want. You could use it for, you could go buy a truck with it.
Okay.
So it will, is the, is one-point-one million dollars, which is five-hundred, five-hundred, and one-hundred thousand dollars, and then it would be gone after that.
All right. I just, I just didn't understand how that worked. Thank you very much for taking my question.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to testify?
Welcome.
Thank you. Again, my name is Chris Eman. Just in full disclosure, I'm not a resident, but I am the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club. I just want to speak out in favor of this, of this project, and, you know, I've been at the police station jokingly, not for reasons you might think, but for other reasons, and it needs to be updated. They need more space. So I think in, we were once part of the police department years ago, the Boys Club, used to be the Concord Police Boys Club. For some of you who've been in town for a while, and I guess it's just an affinity for the organization, since we were once partners, and we just want to speak out and support, support our police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Eman? Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks for everything the Boys and Girls Clubs does, do. Anyone else like to testify?
She's from Concord.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm Althea Barton, and I'm a resident of Pennacook as well, and Concord. I serve on the Concord Heritage Commission, but I'm testifying tonight as an individual, not as a member of Heritage. I support this project a hundred percent, and I want to thank city staff and the police department for working out what I'm sure were a million details to develop what I think is a great plan. I like this project for three reasons, and there are a lot of people in the audience still, so I'm going to try to keep it short, but one is that we clearly need a modernized police station. The second is it seems like the most cost-effective and also environmentally sound option. And the third reason is that it meets the city's goals for historic preservation and adaptive reuse. So you've all been on the tour of the police station. I've been. It seems like a very depressing and difficult place to work. You may know that the old, you all know that the old Pennacook Library used to be a police station. Margaritas also used to be a police station. In Pennacook, there are still jail cells in the basement, and the building is for sale if anybody is interested in converting it to something cool. But there are reasons that the city no longer uses those old spaces, and for something like police work, I really think we need a modern facility where professionals can keep everyone safe. That includes witnesses, victims, people struggling with mental health, mental health crises or struggling with substance abuse who are coming through and being processed, to people coming in to pay a parking ticket. I like the fact that this new facility would be a modern facility that would meet accreditation standards and be designed to keep everyone safe, including the police officers, the staff, and the social workers. And I also think that people coming to work at the new station will love coming to work there, love arriving at work as opposed to now, and people who love coming to work will do a good job. It's important to me that our police department uphold the highest standards of compassionate law enforcement, and I believe they do that now, but I believe that a new facility will help that effort even further. It's also the most cost-effective, environmentally sound option. Renovating the old Concord Route building and adding onto it is a green, environmentally sound solution. I appreciate that the city purchased that building so that it would not be demolished. Demolition means loading up all the resources that are embodied in an old building like that and trucking them to a landfill. It's a waste of resources, and you lose all the embodied energy that is in an old building like that, not to mention losing a beautiful mid-century landmark. And thirdly, you may know that I love history and preservation. I have strong feelings about the city's historic resources, from buildings to cemeteries and parks. And my view of preservation is not to glorify the past or turn everything into a living history museum. It's about using old buildings often for new purposes. I love this building mostly because it's cool. I love the color of it, the geometric glass facade of it, the stone accents. It's really, it really makes a statement. I will say that when Beth Fenstermacher presented this project to the Heritage Commission a few months ago, she asked members of the commission whether we thought it was important to keep the original teal-colored glass panels, to keep it authentic. And from a strictly preservation point of view, that is important, and I expressed that during the Heritage Commission meeting. She asked how we felt about replacing the teal glass with blue glass to represent the police department. As I drove home from that meeting, I thought, man, those drawings of it in blue, it looks just spectacular. And as you know, architecture is important because it lets people know what's happening in that building. It lets you know that when you're entering that building, you are entering a space that has a purpose. So to me, to have new blue glass on that old part of the building would inspire officers and staff to do their best compassionate law enforcement work. So to summarize, I support the building for safety, for the well-being of all the members of our community, for it being cost-effective, environmentally sound, and because it meets the city's preservation goals as outlined in council priorities and in the current master plan. I think it's a win-win project, and I support it. And if I owned a nineteen-forties police cruiser, I would donate it to display in front of the building like the Concord coach was that used to be inside. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Schultz.
Hi, thank you. I like the teal for whatever it's worth. What do you, so you, what do you think of the expansion design?
So there's sort of the architectural view of it, of how does it look from the outside? I think it's tucked back. I think that the design team has made a lot of really good efforts to, to make it compatible with the current building, and really, that's all you can hope for is sort of it being a sensitive addition that respects the original. It's large, of course, so it's not like it's tucked back and you can't see it, and...
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Barton.
Thank you. Thanks for the water.
It's the best water in the state.
I get so nervous talking in front of a group.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. My name's Drew Beamer, and I serve on the Public Safety Board. I previously served on the State Juvenile Parole Board, and I currently serve as a state-level agency director responsible for improving operational continuity and permitting, enforcement, and compliance for large-scale energy projects. I'm here tonight to speak in strong support of the proposed new police department facility. I do, however, want to make it clear that I am here on behalf of myself only, as a resident of one forty-nine Rumford Street, a taxpayer and voter here in the city. I want to begin with a simple principle. It is the role of the police to protect the public, and it is the role of decision-makers to ensure the police have what they need to do the job safely and effectively. Policing will never Policing will never be risk-free. If it were, it would not be policing. The men and women of Concord D.D. have chosen to put our safety, yours and mine, and the safety of our friends and family above their own, and for that, we cannot be thankful enough. But we do have an obligation both to public safety and to the recruitment and retention of qualified officers to make the job as safe, professional, and sustainable as possible. And I believe this project accomplishes just that. The current police station on Green Street was built in 1974, with a couple of additions over the years. Since that time, Concord's population has grown by almost 50% and calls for service have doubled, now reaching around 50,000 a year. The building simply was not designed to support the scale, volume, and complexity of modern law enforcement. The department now supports a daytime population of nearly 90,000 people in the region, but the building is only about 20,000 square feet and has no ability to expand on its current site. It's also important to acknowledge that the nature of crime has changed. Local police are now expected to investigate cybercrimes, identity theft, financial fraud, coordinated narcotics trafficking, and human trafficking, among other 21st century public safety hazards. These cases require dedicated space for technology, evidence processing, interview rooms, data analysis, and coordination with state and federal partners. This isn't just about having more space, it's about having the right kind of space. The current building cannot be configured to meet those needs, no matter how efficiently the department works within its own walls. There are structural safety issues that are not immediately obvious to the public. The current station lacks proper vehicle barriers, for instance. Individuals in custody must sometimes move through common or administrative spaces that house civilian employees. Evidence storage and investigative offices are constrained or intermixed where they should not be. These are not cosmetic problems. They are safety and accreditation issues. They are the kinds of problems that make it harder to retain officers, harder to train new ones, and harder to meet modern professional standards. The proposed facility addresses all of these shortcomings. The site offers roughly double the usable space and the flexibility needed for secure intake, proper evidence handling, officer training areas, and a safe separation between public, operational, and detainees. It also allows for more efficient operations and long-term adaptation as Concord continues to grow. The design work also anticipates sustainability and energy performance, bringing projected energy use down significantly compared to similar facilities elsewhere. I understand this is a large investment. The current estimate is approximately 40, I put 41, it's 45, correct?
Point five.
Million dollars. But delaying this project will not make it less expensive. Construction material costs are rising every year, and the need will never go away. Each year we wait, the cost goes up, and the operational strain increases. This is not about expanding the mission of the police department. It is not about changing policing. It is about aligning the physical environment with the responsibilities we already ask these men and women to carry out. It is about protecting the people who protect us. For all of these reasons, I strongly encourage council to move this project forward, to keep the proposed timeline intact, and to invest in a police facility that reflects the level of public safety our community both expects and deserves. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Beamer. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir? Stephen? Yeah?
Howdy, members of the City Council.
Welcome.
I'm pretty damp, raining out. Got back from school. Okay. We'll make this brief. I want to thank all of you, first off, for investing so much time and energy in this project.
Stephen, would you identify yourself?
Sorry about that. Stephen Kidder, pronouncing him. I'm a resident here in Concord, but I teach in Manchester. I want to thank you all for the time you put into this project. I will say, I, forty, a $45 million building doesn't make me feel safe. I appreciate all that the police officers do. I just think, I just think investing that much money in a building as opposed to in resources for the houseless, or resources for children, resources, I think that money could go a lot further in different places. I think there, I'm appreciative of all the work they do, but I just don't, I can't, I can't, I can't imagine spending $45 million on a building. That would never make me feel safe or make me feel good. So I would encourage the City Council to think of other ways to use this money, or because I just think there's other ways in which it can be better used as opposed to on a building. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kidder?
Cool.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to testify?
Good evening, mayors, members of the City Council, city manager, city clerk. I'm Roy Schweitzer. And I guess I'm a little bit hoarse, I'm sorry about that. But anyway, I may be one of the few people that remembers the old police station at Bicentennial Square, but it wasn't Bicentennial Square then. I remember going upstairs to the police station there, and yes, that was a sad thing, and it's well gone. And I remember when the current police station was a brand-new shiny police station, which unfortunately wasn't properly designed, so the police have been having trouble with it ever since, and I think we're about to do another one of those. But anyway, my first concern about this is, reading all the different things, the numbers are different every time I look at it. There is one, the October thing says the existing police station is 20,000 square feet. The recent email from the mayor says it's 20,493. The slides from November say it's 21,790, so you don't even know how big it is. As far as the new one, I've seen one place was 70,275, another place was 72,828. Come on, people, you know, can't you even make your numbers get together? But anyway, my real concern about this is, I think it's too big. I don't understand how someone can say it's environmentally sound to build a police station that's 50% larger than it needs to be. You can reduce the amount of environmental concern by making it smaller. And at one time, we were told 27,000 square feet was enough. Then in 2024, it was 44,000 square feet, and then it was 47,000 square feet. So how this suddenly became 72,000 square feet? I think basically the problem is we had this giant empty building, and the architect is trying to fill it up. And I think that's a mistake. And I agree with the police officers that, you know, want themselves a new efficient station. I don't think trying to span between the existing and the new building is a way to make it efficient. So I'd like to suggest we build a new police station. But it's not going to be 72,000 square feet, it's going to be maybe 44,000, whatever the correct number for a new police station is. And maybe we can put that up on that end of the lot where the addition was going to be, and make it a police station instead of an addition. And if it won't fit there, there's a couple other lots in the area it could go on. But I think the thing is, we should build them a police station, we should not give them this giant building to deal with. I mean, I don't know if you read the thing, we're going to have to hire three more janitors for the police station, just to keep care of the, keep track of the bigger building. Is that how you want to invest your money, is more janitors and not more police? That doesn't sound very reasonable to me. So we need to scale this back to a smaller thing, build it as a standalone. As far as the existing building, my suggestion was, we sell it to Katz for the amount we paid for it. They turn it into low-income housing, 40 units there, if you use small units, which is what we need more of. The developers don't like to build efficiency apartments because they can't rent them for much, but you can build, you know, a lot more of them than you can if they're one-bedrooms, and there's a lot of people who would be happy to have a small apartment instead of none. So what we need to do is put the police station as a standalone building there or somewhere else. Get that building to someone who can turn it into housing. If Katz doesn't want it, I'm sure there's other people that might. I think one thing that the city needs to do is get a different project manager for this project. I was very unhappy with the character who went to the public meeting, what was it, the eighth, who, instead of, you know, talking about form and function, the stuff architects do, he was saying, oh, we're going to put on these security features, we can't tell you about them because they're secret for the police. So what we need to do is have a project manager who's a police detective. Because first off, as a police detective, you can't say, we can't tell you what it is. You can tell them. Secondly, he understands how the police department works, and he can determine whether these safety features are really good or bad. The third thing is, a police detective is very good at knowing when someone is trying to feed him bullshit. I think that's very important in this case. So, you know, get yourself a police detective as a project manager, and if you don't have one available because they're too busy solving crimes, maybe you can find one that's recently retired or something. And my very last suggestion for you folks, since I have a feeling that, once again, you're going to vote to build the station 50% bigger than it needs to be, is at least put some other things in that thing, like move the human resources department into that building and some of that space. Because I have a feeling that if you pass this, you're not, well, that's another thing. There's another $10 million down the road to convert the new police station offices. I have a feeling that once you build this, and Memorial Field and everything else, people aren't going to want to spend that $10 million to convert the police station. So you better get the human resources people moved into some of the rattling-around space in this, so that they got themselves a real home and save our rent. And, you know, my feeling is, when I first heard about this, going to turn an office building into a police station, so you can turn a police station into offices, and that sounded kind of strange to me. I have a feeling that you're going to run into more expense than you think to try and revamp that police station into something else. Another thing is that $2 million to move the dispatch center. I understand a couple of people have rented to that before. I think the county had some similar problem, which is why the sheriff's department and the dispatch are in different places. I think that Lake Region Dispatch is at the old state school, and they're being evicted now that they're sold to developer. It's going to cost millions of dollars to move Lake Region Dispatch to somewhere else. So, once again, this is a huge expense that you're trying to hide, because sooner or later, someone is going to say, hey, really, the dispatch should be in the police station and not relying on wires or microwave between them. So this is a lot more expensive than it needs to be. You need to size it to an appropriate size and give them their own nice building, instead of trying to patch onto this other thing which can find a better use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Any questions for Mr. Schweitzer? All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Bob Berry. It's been a few years since I've been here. I was the police chief here in the city in the time from about 2007 to 2011. I've been retired now for 14 years. I wish that I had been here in about 2008, asking for you to support construction of a new police station, but that didn't happen. I could talk an od nauseam about square footage and evidence space and things like that. All that information has been shared, it's, you all have access to that. So I'm going to just keep my remarks brief, because there are a lot of people here with good information that you need to hear. A couple of things. Since I retired, I continue to work tangentially with municipal government. I'm a risk manager for one of the risk pools here in the state. I do regular risk assessments of municipal facilities, including police departments. There is a fairly significant exposure to risk in the current functionally obsolete building that is over here at 37, 35. It is a matter of time until a person in custody comes in and is either injured or injures somebody due to the physical makeup here next door. It is dangerous, and something bad is going to happen. During my career, we had at least two incidents where people in custody either attempted or were successful in taking their own life over next door. It is a building whose time has passed, and it is not going to get better on its own. You folks around this table have the opportunity to make a transformational decision for public safety in this community, for years and years going forward. 50 years plus is what I've heard. It may seem like a long time, but when I was hired next door, the third floor of that building was just being completed. It was an active construction zone. So time passes fairly quickly. And if you don't make the decision that I support here tonight, the cost of the decision that you will have to make someday is going to do nothing but increase. So I would ask you to support that. And in supporting, in voting for this project as it's presented, you have the unique opportunity, and one that I have not seen in, you know, 40 years of being either directly involved next door or involved as a member of this greater community, you have the opportunity to show support for the men and women behind us and who work next door like no other opportunity that any council has ever had. As I said, this is a transformational decision that you have the opportunity to make, and I would ask you to support this presentation or this project as it's presented to you here tonight. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Council Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your service.
You're welcome. It was my pleasure.
And for your expertise. Appreciate it very much. So I would assume you have the ability to step back and have some objectivity, too. Is there any aspect of this project that you could see, if we eliminated it, it wouldn't cause any detriment on the risk situation and would potentially save money? And if you don't know, that's also okay.
So, as, as presented, as we just heard, I'm not sufficiently up to speed on the minutia, if you will. The one thing that I anticipate you will be asked at some point to add in is bringing dispatch under the roof of the new building.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Chief, thank you, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Name is Rod Rayner, resident here in downtown Concord for many a years. So I'm going to, listening to the many attributes that the new station will offer, I'm pretty much in total agreement, it is necessary. So I support the project, but with conditions. No surprise, as an engineer, right? So my conditions are, as I've tried to follow this over the years, from 20,000, thereabouts for the existing, to 40 as an initial suggestion, 40, 42K square feet, maybe 45. Now we're up to 72, so there's been a lot of variations and exceedances, I believe, in transferring info to the public. Last October, when staff had a true informational meeting unlike this, I was very complimentary to city staff and staff for doing it. My only comment at the time were twofold. One was, we should have had one earlier in the spring so that would there be less of a surprise in the last quarter of the year. And then, secondly, I suggested that we defer the final vote this evening so that we evaluate one- one other option. So, Mike, I'm trying to reach a compromise. So, again, I support the project. Why can't we meet in the middle, settle on a number, go back to the architect, let's design this for 45 to 50K square feet? Let's do that. You can go back to my testimony at the informational meeting in October, and I suggested designing a knockout wall on the addition, so that it's there in plan, but there is a knockout wall on the west side of the addition, such that in the future, 10, 12 years out, it's ready, it's there, we bring the prints back out. Yes, they need to be updated, but it would save us some money. I would not be testifying this evening if City of Concord wasn't experiencing a perfect storm. So please, don't operate in a vacuum. Many of you have said through news media that, yes, you've heard your constituents, you've heard your listeners. Again, I think if this was the only project on the CIP, it would go through, no problem. But you know that's not the case. Run the middle, Memorial Field, okay? Many other things that are on the horizon, so... And I know some of you will say, "Wait a minute, it costs more money in total if we do the expansion a decade out." Yes, total cost will be greater. But perhaps Emperor Donald will no longer be in power, and we might have more grant dollars available to help us out. So that's my suggestion. Yes, proceed forward, make a number 45 to 50K in terms of 1,000 square feet, design a knockout wall, it can be done.
Questions for Mr. Rayner? Mr. Rayner, we believe that I've asked about modifications to the current plan, and one of the challenges on that is that, obviously, as you know as an engineer, it would cost us additional architectural design cost. And also probably could not be completed, so that we could start our bonding in January, and also get into the spring '26 building cycle. Do you have any thoughts about that?
I hear what you're saying, but what is the rush? What is the urgency to get it done, to initiate construction in the spring? Bonds might be the same in midsummer, the rate, or in the fall. Initiating construction in the fall, we can do that, too. If we say, I know we're going to, I know many of you will say, the total cost over time will be greater. And I acknowledge, yes, it will. But because of the, unless Concord has won the Powerball recently, okay? You know, let's try to meet in the middle and do a compromise.
Thank you. Councilor.
Thank you, and appreciate your testimony here as an engineer. So when we cut it to 20, because you said between 45 and 50.
Yep.
We are at 70 or 72. If we cut it, say we are at 50, and we save 20 square foot, 20,000 we are talking about.
Yep.
How much are you projecting on saving on that? Because even if we delay, we know it's going to be losing, but how much are we going to save on that? So that, and the loss we calculate might combine with that.
That's a valid question, but I can't say, I don't know. I do not know. I've seen numbers kicked around, that it's around $700 a square foot, which was cited in the news media as being very, I think it was 692, but I'm going to round it to 7. So at 20 times 700...
140.
Okay? So, no, that's, that should be 14 mil.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, again, I wouldn't be here wasting my time or yours if this was the only project on the CIP. But that's not the case.
So if we are projec...
Hold up.
So if we are projecting to save 14 million, do you think with that 14 million, we will be able, even if we wait a month, two months, or whatever month, we'll be able to not go in any hole? We can still have some cash flooding, because 40 million out of the 45. I'm just trying to do a math here, because it will give us 31 million.
That 14 million could be allocated towards other CIP projects that are forthcoming, as we all know. So that's my point. And it would kind of serve to minimize, to somewhat deflect, the projected cost increase.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Rayner.
Thank you. Okay.
Could be a race.
Charles Russell of Concord, congratulations to all of you that were re-elected, and to those of you that didn't run, thank you for your service. Charles Russell of Concord, I guess I'll draw a parallel. The three questions would be location, size, and cost. Two years ago, less a month, we were here talking about a golf course, a $10 million golf course, and that was kind of deferred out, and we ended up with a $6 million golf course clubhouse. And so that, as Ron suggested prior speaker, it may be time to kind of look at some of these things. One of the, one of the issues when you go out and you get architects that specialize in certain types of buildings, as we've seen with the school issue, which we won't talk about, specialized in public safety buildings, they're going to gold plate it, or platinum plate it, and they're going to put in all the bells and whistles and state-of-the-art. And what happens is, as what happened, I guess, with the golf course, and to a lesser extent on the schools, is they start looking at what reductions can we take along the way? And so, Mr. Schweitzer had some questions. I thought we were going from 22,000 square feet to 52,000, but I guess if it's going to be a bigger building, maybe it is higher. But, but the question, I guess, on one thing is, I see where, sorry to bounce around, but we're going to put social service and the prosecutor in a police station when they're already someplace else. If we're going to vacate, to some extent, the 35 Green Street next door, then perhaps we could put the social service and prosecutor in there as well. To the extent that you're going to keep the communications in there, then perhaps you could keep the Sallyport, or some of the more police-intensive-type facilities there, since they're already there. But anyway, but it's a, it's a continuum. We have homelessness. And why do we have homelessness? Because we have expensive rents. And because of expensive rents, then we have a lack of a workforce, and business gets involved. And then what happens? Wages have to go up, people are commuting in, and then taxes are increased. And then what happens is, the landlords increase the rent, and then we cycle back. So to the extent there's this continuum about building a facility that's probably beyond the size that's really needed at this point. I looked at some of the figures, and, you know, we've gone up 200 people a year over the last 10 or 15 years. I came here 50 years ago, there were 30,000, it jumped to about 45, jumped to about 40 in the early 2000s. So undoubtedly, it's needed. It's a process, you're in the process. As the prior speaker said, there should not be a rushed judgment, let's do it right. You know, the, we're not far from a taxpayer revolt if all these things are going to happen. So, we need it, we have the location, we don't have to fight like we did with the school district on where we're going to put the building. The question is the size, the cost per square foot seems reasonable, as Ron said, but I think reductions can be made, and time needs to be put into it to make those reductions. I'll take any questions, if anyone wants any.
Any questions for Mr. Russell? Councilor Kurtz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Russell, based on your experience with the middle school project, do you believe that delaying, going back to the drawing board, coming up with a new design, will actually save us money, the taxpayers of Concord, in the long run?
As to the police station?
Yes.
Mr., the prior speaker talked about 20,000 less square feet at $700 a square foot, that's $14 million. I mean, the countervailing argument is, well, if you don't do it now, it's just going to get much more expensive. Well, if you make it smaller, that expenses are going to be, aren't going to be the driving force. So, you know, what's the reason, you know, what's the reason for, I thought it was two and a half times, apparently it's three and a half times. I mean, that's, that's what they were going to do with the golf course when it started. I think it was going up two and a half to three and a half times the current size, and there was no justification. You had a, you had a citizen committee that was pretty much driving that, or a council subcommittee driving that. So, I think money can be saved, but you need to go through the process. You don't have, you know, a number, when you go out and buy a car, you don't go in and say, "I'd like to buy a car that can get me from here to there," but what's the next thing you say? Well, this is my budget. You know, we're not hearing the budget first. The budget number should be there before you start the design. That's what, that's the way the process should be working. That hasn't happened in the, in the school process. They go get a Boston architect, and it's probably 50% more than what it should cost. I don't know where this architect comes from. They obviously know things, but there are things that can be stripped away, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor, city councilors and staff, thank you so much for your time. First of all, let me appreciate you guys for the time that you give this work. I think it's, I don't know, I don't know how I can speak about it, because I did experience a little bit what you guys go through, so it's really, yeah, I appreciate it.
Don't forget to identify yourself.
And I do appreciate, I'm sorry.
You get to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Fisto Ndeshimie. I live in Concord, Penne Cook. Yeah, thank you. So, something I'm thinking about, first of all, I do appreciate the engineers and the police, I think. I think if we speak a little bit about the police, I think they do such a great job in our city. And it would, you know, it would make sense if we support the work they're doing, provide the space they're asking, make sure they're safe, make sure they have equipments they're asking for. That's, that's common sense. That's something that everybody would want, and I want that. And I'd say, from the beginning, I do support this project with my whole heart, and I want this to happen. And the fact that we want to keep our police safe and make sure they do their work, it's what drives us, you know, to do this work. It's what drives you to do this work, it's why, it's why the community is here, to speak about these ideas, because they're such a great ideas for the, for the community. But here's something we have to think about, right? I've listened to the city, to the community members, listened to some members of the community face-to-face, sitting in their homes, you know, just watching what's going on. And you realize that now the community is awake, right? They're talking about the costs, they're talking about, you know, housing, talking about different kinds of issues we have in our community. And it really has a lot to do with, with how we fund projects. It has a lot to do with how we spend our taxpayers' money. And adding to this project, I mean, adding this project to the cost, would mean that we, you know, we take off some other projects that really supports our community, in terms of, you know, other areas, like housing and the other things. Most importantly, and this is safety, right? We're talking about safety. Most importantly, when you talk about safety, we have to, we have to make sure that we understand what that means to every member of our community, right? And when you see the budget that you have, 40-plus million dollars, that's a lot of money. I would suggest that we don't rush, right? Keep working on this, you know? Make sure that this is happening. It's really not about the time. It's about, it's about the cost, and it's about the quality of this project. And my brother and I do, you know, sometimes, he's like, when you buy, like you buy expensive stuff. I don't buy expensive, I buy something that is going to stay longer. I buy quality. And so I don't want a police station that, after 10 years, is not longer helping our city or our police. We want something that is going to last longer, and something that is going to help our, our police, our police. And I would say that this is not the right time to invest in a new police station. Yes, it is time to examine what's possible, what could work, but the fact that we're facing these issues, we have to, we have to know that, yes, it's good to protect our police, it's good to provide the equipments they need, but also, it's good that we understand that some community members are priced out of our community, based on like the costs. And we have to figure it out, and do our homework, and change some numbers. Because I did, I sat down, I did some research, based on what I saw on the, on the city website, you know, I asked for some information, and I do connect with our city clerk, she's doing a great job, y'all, thank you. Amazing. Fast on time, I really appreciate your service. But honestly, I did research, and, you know, outside, outside the community, what other cities are doing, you know, accessing federal grants, accessing state grants, you know, they've made some changes around, you know, fiscal responsibilities, and I think that's work that needs to be done. I think there has to be a chance, an opportunity for, for the city council, or next city council, to examine how money is spent, line by line, because that's what I did. And I hope that in the future, I'm going to be able to come, to come with the final, you know, findings I've come up together, put together. But I'm telling you, there's a need for the city council to do some examination, examine how the money is spent. And by the way, when you look at, you know, the participation, it's also something that needs to be paid attention on, like we have to pay attention on the participation, it's important, especially when it comes to safety. Safety is important when it comes to participation. So I suggest that you take this back, and probably hand this to the next council, and then, I'm sorry, and then continuing the work, continue to, because I want to, I want to support this, I want to engage young people, I want to make sure that this is supported. But we have to understand what's critical in our community. And what's critical is that people are priced out. Again, I don't want to continue to, you know, rotating, but people are asking for fair living, you know, living style. And make sure that if we're investing in our city, whatever comes back, it benefits everybody. And you realize when it's not benefiting everybody, when the, when the, you know, projects that we're doing, whatever is spent, is not benefiting everybody, you realize that some people are not really, you know, part of what we're doing. And some, you know, there's gaps, and there's also disconnections when that happens. So I suggest that you bring this back, this prioritize what's more important to the, to the community, and this is important, too, but it's not the time for it. But let's keep working on it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any question for Mr. Fisto? Okay, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Fisto.
Yes.
My name is Chris O'Connor. I live on South Street in Ward 6 here in Concord. As I consider sort of an average homeowner here in Concord, I am not poor by any means, but I am not wealthy by any means. And it seems to me, folks like me are facing a looming property tax apocalypse, and that's based on many of the things that have been mentioned. One thing that has not... One thing that has not been mentioned is the current assessment, which if those people are doing their jobs correctly, the house I bought for, my wife and I bought for nine years ago will probably double in assessment. Now, if my property taxes double, then with all respect to the police, they can stay right where they are. If this council adjusts tax rates to offset those assessments, at least somewhat, then I'm more than willing to consider this project. But until we know what those property tax rates are, how high they're going to go along with the middle school and all the other projects, I don't think it's wise or prudent at all to go forward with this project. I think it is the wisest thing right now to put this whole project and many similar expensive projects on hold until there is a fair understanding by all the taxpayers of Concord to know what their tax rates are going to be once those assessments and tax rates are put in place for the next tax cycle.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Any, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Continue.
Anyone else like to testify? Yes.
Evening, everyone.
Welcome.
My name is Paul Dean. I am a resident of Concord. I'm here with you today to highly recommend you that you vote on this, and let me tell you why. In January, I retired of forty years in law enforcement service, eighteen of those as a police chief. I went through this in my previous job, not to the scale, because I was a small agency, but these conversations happened then, in 2011. Why can't it be cheaper? What can we do to cut costs? And what ends up happening, quite frankly, is police departments are so in need of a better facility, we acquiesce. So let me tell you, I acquiesced. And let me tell you where it happened. In ten years, my, the police department was falling apart. The walls were falling apart because they used cheaper sheet rock. Door knobs were falling apart because they used smaller, cheaper things. The biggest part to that is space. And you think spaces in an office is really what we're talking about. It's space for storage, it's space for evidence, and we ran out of space after five years with records. Some things that the police have to keep are forever records, and not all those forever records live on a computer. In the evidence room, the police have to keep sane kids done for sexual assaults forever. There's evidence in your, in your, in your evidence room right now with firearms that have been there forever. And so, we have obligations to do that, and if we don't do it right, we face civil litigation. Now, I've looked at the plans. I don't think they're extravagant. I think well-thought-out. In fact, I know your chief well enough to know that he's not an extravagant human being. He just wants what's best for your community and the officers. So there's a couple of things that I'll just say, and everybody said a lot of great things, and I appreciate the people that, that have concerns with it. Taxes are important for all of us, all of us sitting here. It's a big deal, but so is in public safety. So let me tell you where I get nervous right now. I get nervous if a juvenile has to come through your front doors, your doors there as a suspect or a criminal. Federal law says you have to keep sight and sound from people. I challenge sight and sound is taking place all the time. Maybe you're in the evening shifts where there's not many people around. What happens during the day? We're violating the law. Not intentionally, it just happens to be the way things are set up. Accreditation standards. My agency was dual-accredited and has been accredited for the last fifteen years. Accreditation standards are national standards, and those national standards will be used to look at the Concord Police Department in times of civil suits, because they are the standards. They are the standards, that police standards, the training says should happen. They are national standards and international standards on how law enforcement should be doing business. But it really focuses a lot on the facility. And the facility's use has changed over the years. Domestic violence. There needs to be soft rooms. There needs to be safe places for victims of domestic violence to come in and be able to sit there with a social worker, a domestic violence detective, in order to make sure they feel safe and they're able to get the services that they need. Mental health, for law enforcement, it's out of control. If anybody tells you any different, they're lying to you. Every day, law enforcement, almost every corner we're going to has a mental health component to it. And then add in the internet to some of those things with our young people, and you have an explosion. So when I see a thing like a Faraday room not being considered, I understand, okay, but I can tell you 100% that you're going to need a Faraday room, because you're a cyber detective, those working on, are going to need that. I see that you had a range in there and you cut out. Okay, I understand that. But what's dwindling is outdoor ranges. As, as your community gets more compact, even when your ranges, they're going to start to complain. Most outdoor police ranges are shutting down. Where are they going to qualify? Or do you want them just to go out there once a year and do, and shoot their firearms? I think all those things are important to consider, and you've got a tough job here to do this. I know all those projects that are coming up as well. I don't envy your, your job, and it's difficult, but please, amount of square footage in there is right, and it is right to carry you fifty years more. I please encourage you to support the police department. They've worked hard for this, they've done the work. Please, give them an opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Dean. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, Council second.
Thank you for your enthusiastic support, and it seemed like based on all the benefits you just listed, you did mention the tax and how important it is. And I'm sorry if I felt to know where you live. Where do you live?
Me? I live, I live on North State Street.
Okay. You mentioned that the tax is something, and you don't envy this job. If I ask you one question on this entire project, what would be an opportunity for this project in your thoughts?
Opportunity?
Thinking about, yes, thinking about the fiscal responsibility that we all have to take on.
An opportunity for the success of this project, as is?
Yes.
Here's a community room that's being built there. In my police department, we ended up making our training room into a school room for college students, and five college classes were held there every week. The amount of goodwill and officers interacting with young people was amazing. Stuff that you're not going to get on an everyday basis. Your community room will be the basis for the police department to host many events. We, we are excited that this community is diverse. I sat on the governor's DEI commission under, under Governor Sununu. It's needed. Those kind of, those kind of avenues are needed to build relationships, and I think that's a success that you can't, you can't buy, as police struggle in this country to be seen. So, that's just one success that, that I can point out instantly, that I know it will work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Chief Dean.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Lisa Bowden. I live in Ward Four here in Concord. I support the police unequivocally, all the time. It's true, we do in fact need a modernized police station, yes. Police deserve, and, and the people they bring into the police station deserve a safe place that is, has the appropriate technology and the items needed. That being said, I have some courageous and potentially uncomfortable points to lift up as you contemplate approving this project. I would like to know what is the current operating cost of the police station, because the projected new cost is between $500,000 and $700,000 a year, and that will also represent a tax increase on the taxpayers. The building is very big, and I appreciate Mr. Rayners and Mr. Schweikers and other, other Concord residents' comments on that. A long time ago, in the age B.C., before children, I earned a bachelor of science degree in criminal justice. And I know that crime rates have fallen steadily in New Hampshire, except for the blip of 2020, since 2016. Crime rates have also fallen both for minor crime as well as violent crime in the city of Concord. I think it's really important that you all know that, and I think it's really important that the residents of Concord know crime rates are falling. On a tax consideration scale, I appreciated hearing another resident's call that this is a perfect storm. I happen to know a young man living in this city who pays about $5,100 a year in property taxes, and his property taxes are going to go up between the new middle school project and this police department project, $500 a year. That does not include the projected increased costs of YNITO. That does not include increased costs in food and other non-negotiables. There are many senior citizens living in the condo, or in the condo association I live in, who wept to the board of the condo association. We had to do a special assessment because they are on fixed incomes, like my son is on fixed income. $500 on a $5,100 a year tax bill is unimaginably difficult. I would recommend to this board that you leave out all of the ad alternates to minimize the, the costs. I hope that you will give serious consideration to Mr. Rayners' suggestion of building the wall that he referenced as an engineer, that I can't replicate that language. You are entrusted with our votes on the well-being of all Concord residents here. We spent $6 million, and I would offer, in my opinion, foolishly and recklessly on that golf course renovation. It is your job as elected officials to look out for the common good, for the least, for the citizens of this city who can least afford to be here with the, with the tax apocalypse. I loved that, by the way, thank you. With the tax apocalypse that is coming, we are going to end up like Portsmouth, where people working at the Hotel Concord are going to be living in Henneker and Hillsborough and surrounding towns, and that is unacceptable. That is an unacceptable moral and ethical way for us to stage ourselves. In the future, I would encourage the city council to adopt a policy where there is an architecture, engineering, and contracting team that is hired. If you, perhaps you did this on the front end, but that's not my understanding. And you give any project, project budget from the beginning, and you tell the AEC team, this is what we have to work with, you stay within our guidelines, because we are here representing ordinary citizens of Concord, those people for whom a $500 jump in one year in their taxes is untenable. We are looking at people choosing between food and utility bills, and this is not even, you, you, the, the city council also knows that there are downshifting tax pressures from the state of New Hampshire's also highly irresponsible non-inability to decide to tax Granite staters fairly. So that pressure is on you all as well. I would also encourage the city council moving forward not to silo each month's review of proposed additional project expenses. In January, have a map, what's coming up, so that when you're voting in May or March, that you know what you're expecting for a budget line item in October. And the public deserves to know. Back in March, when you all were taking public testimony on the golf course and hearing about the complaints and concerns about the cost of that, we had the right to know as citizens some idea of where the cost of this police station was going to be. And again, like, we have to build a new police station. That is not a question. We have to do that. We need to make sure that the police feel honored and respected and valued, and we need to make sure that the, again, I'm repeating myself, that the people who they take into custody or who they're educating, that they have a reasonable, clean, safe space. It is really important that this city council change its practices around having a better map and a better landscape at the front end of the year of what the expenditures for the city is going to be, so that you all know better how to prioritize, making sure that you are lifting up the common good and the least among us as you are deciding on what kind of money to spend on what kind of projects. I am so angry that we spent $6 million on a golf course, knowing that this project was coming up, and how much money did we spend on affordable housing so that people who work at Dos Amigos and the Hotel Concord and where janitors and our public schools can still live in this city and enjoy it? Economic privilege is sometimes hard to bear. So I would urge you to think deeply and carefully about people who you might not get to spend a whole bunch of time with because they're, they're not in your social circles, but they exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Councilor Keach?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one question, if I could.
Your order, please.
To be quite honest, I'm not clear if you support building a new police station or not. I, I understand you don't like the cost, but are you supportive of the project?
I, I support the police getting a new police station. I think that it's very important to try to trim the costs, and, you know, I'm not going to talk out of my wheelhouse about issues that I do not have subject matter expertise on, so I'm not going to, I can't speak to what is a reasonable cost. That's your job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Welcome.
Hi there. Nice to see you all. I didn't expect to speak today, so I'm sorry if I'm a little ill-prepared. My name is Sayre. I live in Concord. I live at a North State Street. And like some of the other people who spoke today, you know, I love Concord, I'm very passionate about Concord. But as a young person who lives in Concord, the reality is I most likely will not be ever able to own a home here in Concord. I rent, and I have to hope every year that my rent does not increase, because if it does, I could potentially be homeless because of the lack of other affordable I rent, and I have to hope every year that my rent does not increase, because if it does, I could potentially be homeless because of the lack of other affordable options here in Concord. And I know friends of mine who have had to relocate because they lost their housing in Concord and could not find more affordable housing. And I have some experience that I wanted to, to share with you guys, as again, a young person in New Hampshire, but who's worked in a variety of different helping professions, one of them being the Crisis Center here in Concord. I worked there for about three years, and I, to be clear, I don't speak on behalf of any of my present or past employers. These are my opinions only. But so you, I'm not sure if you guys know, most of the workers make under $20 an hour at the Crisis Center, and these are people who are dealing with people in life-or-death situations, high lethality situations, and most of them make under $20 an hour. We staff a 24/7 hotline. We run a shelter 24/7 every day. For most of my employment, I worked off of plastic foldable tables because we couldn't afford furniture. When we did buy a new building, we ended up, the advocates all work from the basement, which was not renovated into anything other than basement. There's sewage that runs through it that we hear every time someone flushes the toilet. I loved my job at the Crisis Center. We didn't have the resources that we needed, ever. Every time a client needed a hotel, we had to fight to justify the reasons as to why. If somebody needed a bus ticket, we had to, we couldn't fund that ourself. We had to rely on, on Hearts for Kindness. We had to rely on the Victim Compensation Fund because we could not fund people who needed help. And some of these people are people that didn't feel comfortable calling the police because of whatever it may be. And we were the front lines for a lot of those people. So just when thinking about some other people have brought up other ideas of other ways to spend some of this money, and I will have to be honest with you, I'm not a numbers person. I can't project to you what's an appropriate amount to spend. I do support updating things to make sure everybody in Concord is safe. That includes the police officers that work here. That includes the people who work at the Crisis Center. That includes, currently I work in mental health. A lot of people cannot afford to be licensed in the state of New Hampshire because of costs associated with licensure. We're losing yearly, we are losing counselors because people cannot afford it. People, student loans, they cannot afford housing. And, you know, there are a lot of, in other counties, not so much in Merrimack County because I used to also work in, in the courts. You know, there's a lot of other types of treatment courts that other counties have that we could absolutely adopt. Treatment courts for people with substance use issues, mental health court, family treatment court, veterans court. I don't believe we have any of those things here. But they do have them in other counties, and they help save lives. They save families. And I understand that the idea is, is that more police officers and more social workers will prevent people from being in that situation, but it doesn't if we don't have any resources for people. I work in mutual aid. We have been trying to assist people who have been affected by the encantments being cleared. And what we hear from police officers is that they can't recommend really anywhere for these people to go. There are no walk-in shelters in Concord. Most of the shelters that exist in Concord are for families only. I believe there might be one shelter that is not specifically for a protected community such as survivors of domestic violence or families. And I, one of my personal friends, Tim Russell, died this year as a result of homelessness. And I really do believe if he wasn't homeless, he would still be here today. So I just need you guys to know that, again, if we don't have any resources for these people, how do police officers and social workers help them? We need to fund the resources for people to have. In the mutual aid work I do, we serve between 30 and 50 people every week who are not getting what they need. We have hygiene. We have medical supplies. We have food. We have clothing. We have camping gear, because they can't get that anywhere else. And all of the money that we have for our mutual aid projects are donation-based or grant-based. So these are coming from, our community is funding our community at times more than our city is. And we hear that from people, is they don't have the resources. I volunteer at our winter shelter that is open for maybe a few months. It's not open right now. It's very cold out tonight, and there are, on average, about 100 people in Concord who are completely unhoused almost every day, given, I think that was a 2024 stat. Concord's a pretty small place. There's 100 people. And knowing too that it is illegal to camp anywhere. There is nowhere that people can legally be, and there is no shelters for them. So, again, I, I don't have numbers for you, but I have a lot of experience working with a lot of different people who need a lot of things that this project will not fix. And yeah, that's, that's what I have to say. If anybody has any questions, I'd have to answer.
Any questions? Councilor Schultz?
I just want to say thank you for the work you do. It's thankless work, and I really value your testimony.
Thank you.
Councilor Cradick?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, here you gave us your first name, but not your last name, and it's important for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. My last name was Moskwa.
Moskwa. Councilor Horn?
So you support a new police station at a lower cost? Or what, I'm sorry, I'm not putting words in your mouth.
Yes, I, I, yes. I, I, again, I do understand, because, again, working with, with victims, there were a lot of times where criminal cases couldn't proceed because we couldn't get police reports or evidence or, you know, I don't necessarily think that more officers will prevent domestic violence. Domestic violence is a systemic issue that police can be a part of. So I do support making, again, a safer Concord for everybody, and that does include police. And I do think that some of these things that are talking, being talked about do make sense, that will help keep our community safe as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to testify?
Evening, everybody.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Councilors. My name is Catherine Kelleher. I own a house here in the South End. I've been an employee of the Concord Police Department for over 20 years now. And I just came to talk about a couple areas of the Police Department that I have direct knowledge of. First, I'd like to say, I don't want my taxes to go up just as much as anyone else. I work two jobs. I work hard. I'm a single homeowner. So I, I get to struggle, but there are a couple big items on this upcoming year that I, I believe in. One of them is obviously the Police Department. I'm going to speak on three things: the meter room, where I get dressed for every day for work, the reception area, and the women's locker room. The meter room that we currently have right now, there's five of us. There's five lockers. We have two open positions. We have one person in background. There is no room for lockers for them. I don't know where they're going to get dressed. I don't know where they're going to put their equipment. We have a lot of equipment, especially in the wintertime, coats, boots, hats. I mean, we, we carry a lot of equipment on us personally, our, our machines, our radios. We've outgrown it. Our meter room goes directly out into the garage, the ramp that if officers are bringing someone into custody, we, I've walked into people coming up that ramp more times over my career than I want to admit. It's not safe for me. It's not safe for the officers, and it's not safe for the person in custody. The second area is the reception area. I work, I cover there one hour every day for the receptionist's lunch. I cover when she's on vacation. I cover when she's gone to appointments. That area is like working in a closet. There's not enough room for all the equipment that we use, the computers, the cash register to do parking tickets and other fingerprints and whatever other money comes in that we have to run through the cash drawer. If someone is calling in on the telephone and there's somebody at the window, that person at the window hears every conversation I have. People, you know, calling in, they want to report stuff to me. I'm writing it down. I have to ask them questions so that I can get the call out to dispatch. They can dispa, they hear every question I ask. That person calls in. There is no privacy. The women's locker room. When I first started, 20 years ago, I had a locker in there. I've been booted out of that locker room for a long time now because there's so many women officers that now they have run out of room in there. Our women that work for this department deserve a place to be able to get dressed, to keep their equipment, to keep their personal equipment. If they want to work out in the gym and come in and take a shower, they deserve a place that they can go and do that. We have run out of room for them. We hire any more women officers, I really don't know where they're going. And it's a shame. And I know a lot of people are like, "What's the rush? What's the rush?" The rush is, we don't have, we don't have room for parking people. We don't have room for the new female officers. It, it, we got to do something. There's, something has to be done. They deserve somewhere to go, somewhere to have, I mean, I've never been to the men's locker room. Can't speak of that, but I can imagine it's much better. So, yeah. So those, those are my concerns for, and it's not just, and I think people are under the impression that, you know, when they talk about the police station, it's not the police station, just the police station, the police, parking enforcement, the social workers, city prosecutors, all these people are going in this new building. It's not just our police officers. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, Councilor Cradick?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for your service. I know that I've been working downtown probably for as long as you've been doing the parking enforcement, and I think that oftentimes people miss the fact that our parking enforcement officials in the downtown are the frontline to medical emergencies that tend to happen on the street as well, whether it's on our unhoused community, whether it's from our senior citizens who are downtown, the legislative bodies that you often are noticing an emergency long before we can get help to somebody and on-site. I know this because I've seen this. I've seen you give this type of service in our community, and it is greatly appreciated. I'm so glad that you brought up the locker room. To me, when we talk about a city that is diverse and equitable, equity fails when we can't support our women and our women in uniform. Thank you so much for your testimony and your service.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for you. So if a redesign to reduce the square footage of the building pushed this project into 2026 so that construction could start in 2027, do you think it'd be acceptable to not to have a new station until 2028?
I'm telling you, we're out of room now. So we hire two more parking people, we're, we're out of room in the parking division. We hire more female officers, we're out of room in the female locker room. We, we are just, unfortunately, the city, I mean, well, not unfortunately, but the city has grown, the Police Department has grown substantially in the 20 years that I've been here. So, I mean, it's just the sign of the times, that the building just does not hold all of us anymore.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify? Come. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Nicole Fox. I am a resident. So I attended the public meeting that the city had a few weeks ago about the police station. And I am persuaded that the, from all the photos of inside the police station, that they're truly out of room, as the speaker just before me said with far more detail. I think the location in the city is truly ideal. It's got, provides, it's so much good access to transportation, to be able to provide good response times. The existing building is the size that it is, and the addition is needed for facilities that can't be housed in that existing building, and so the extra size, you know, if the existing building was a perfect fit, and it was a little bit smaller, that would be great, but having additional room for expansion of services, you know, other speakers have spoken about mental health challenges and social workers and having the ability to have more social workers to work with the, closely with the police officers, I think would be a benefit to the community. I am a member of the middle school building committee, so I will wait for the tomatoes to be thrown at me. And I'm not speaking for them, but I have been to all the presentations from the architects and the construction manager, and the costs have gone up significantly with every delay that we've had. It's not likely to get cheaper construct, I'm, I'm also a civil engineer, and infrastructure costs, steel and concrete keep going up in cost, and so delaying the project is unlikely to really solve those financial issues that people are facing. I do think it is a really unfortunate confluence that so many significant projects are kind of coming due at the same time, and we have so many needs in this community. We'd love for the city to look for ways to reduce, you know, budgets in the future, to alleviate some of the burden on residents, and to encourage business development so that those effects can be paid by business growth instead of just residents owning homes. It is really hard for folks.
Thank you. Would any, any questions? Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Kristin Ritz, and I'm here to show my support of the new Police Department, not just as a Concord resident, also as a Police Department records employee. Some dangerous people have been brought into custody, and when they are, they are escorted from the Sally Port to holding cells. And the only way that can be done is to walk past the records office, leaving records employees essentially defenseless if something ever happened. With the new building, we have worked with command staff and the architect design team to create a workflow in records that not only will provide a safer environment, but several other benefits. One is we will have a dedicated and locked payroll office, and another is we will have a separate records window to enhance efficiency and privacy, and we'll no longer be sharing our records window with police officers registering sex offenders. There will be a separate lobby area for the officers to register sex offenders. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you very much.
Did you put your hand up? Yeah, all right. This is, this is why, if we do build a new police station, and when we do reconfigure this campus, I would like to have a city council chamber where everybody is visible from the mayor's seat, and where everyone is able to testify without walking upstairs. So my apologies.
Perfectly fine. It's all right. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilors, City Manager. My name is Aisling Caleb. I live in Ward Six. I'll be joining you in January, and I look forward to that. But right now, obviously, I'm speaking just as a resident of Concord, resident of my ward, and also as someone who's spent the last couple of months speaking directly to my, my neighbors, to residents of Concord about the issues that are important to them and what they care about and what they are concerned about. Oh. Okay. All right. So I have a few thoughts written here. First, I, I would like to say that your vote today isn't whether or not to build a new police station ever, at any point in time. I see this, this vote against this, this vote for or against this project asked the question, is now the right time. A number of other people have gotten up here and echoed similar sentiments, and I appreciate them sharing their voices. That's the decision, really, whether or not a new police station is urgent at this point in time, urgent enough to push through now. Perhaps there's value in waiting or in pursuing a different course of action to solve the critical issues that face our Police Department.
done my best to share, share the information that I've learned with, with people in a digestible way. And I do understand there are significant needs, interview rooms, better support for victims, survivors of domestic violence, ability to achieve the accreditation which was spoken about earlier, accreditation that is voluntary but does set, set really important standards for police conduct that I do think are, are important. And then the better space for evidence storage. These are things I understand. I, I, obviously, I don't have all of the answers on how to solve those problems if we don't move forward with this police station. But I just want to be clear on that point. So back to the urgency. Another individual spoke about downward trends in crime, I think that was Ms. Bowden. And yes, our population will be increasing in the next few years, few decades, calls for service have increased, but I don't know the breakdown of that, how many of those are, are crime-related, calls for service does not equal increased crime. But I also want to point out, I'm not sure if anyone has pointed this out yet, according to the proposal, this police station will be ultimately almost the same size as Manchester's city, nearly three times the size of Concord. And to me, and to a number, and to folks that I have spoken to, I wonder if this is just simply too much or too much for right now. People have mentioned the poor timing, we have the tax burden that folks are going to feel regarding rebuilding at Runlet, $155 million. And I say this as someone who does really believe that it is a critical, urgent need for our students to have an adequate middle school, a middle school that is not a health hazard. I believe that's super important, but I have heard so many concerns from folks over the last couple of months knocking on doors and just being online and responding to comments and speaking to friends and neighbors, that, that is going to cause significant burden on them, which will reflect on property tax bills. And another person before mentioned rent prices, which I really appreciate. I am a renter. I will be one of a few renters up here, and I understand my fate is also tied to rising property taxes, and I'm, I'm concerned. And I'm empathetic to folks that see their property tax bill directly. I have something I'd like to, to read. I am not, obviously, in office yet, but I have been getting emails, people reaching out who would like to be heard. I, I received an email from a neighbor, actually. I don't know this person yet, and I look forward to getting to know them on Concord Street, which was sent over to the city clerk and to council members, and I'd just like to read a little part of it. This individual says, "As a longtime resident of Concord, growing up in town and now recently finally owning property on Concord Street, I've seen the good that the Concord Police Department has done for the city. However, I have seen the city struggle to address the root cause of much crime. I've also seen and experienced firsthand now how painful large property taxes increases on homeowners." And so I, I read that, and I really, I felt that. And that perspective that was shared is not unusual. I, I do, I have, like I said, I've spoken to so many people, and I've spent so much time online, and I have not seen many people, up until a couple hours ago, speak, speak favorably of this project, simply because of the tax burden that it will cause. And of course, that is anecdotal, but it doesn't mean it's not a real barometer of, of how the public feels. Another email, I had somebody in Ward Ten named Elaine, she's lived here, a homeowner for 50 years. She forwarded me a message, she sent over to the city, city clerk. She says, "This proposal comes in the wake of the school board's decision to build a $225 million," in parentheses, "this includes interest on the bond, middle school. Then there's the multimillion dollar project for Memorial Field and the multimillion dollar Beaver Meadow Clubhouse. How do you think low and middle income, as well as most elderly residents, can afford the taxes for all of this?" The short answer is, we can't. The reason I bring up waiting is, this is a terrible economic time to be asking the public to help pay for things that aren't immediately urgent, in my mind and based on conversations that I have had, things that aren't immediately urgent when they are of this magnitude, in terms of the global economy and also individuals and how their pockets are hurting. I wonder how bad things are going to get. I don't know if any of you here get your healthcare through the Affordable Care Act, through the marketplace. That is how I access healthcare, and I am going to have to make a decision whether or not to be insured next year while I'm sitting right there. Things are very, very hard economically, and I just wanted to point that out. That's a personal matter, but I feel it's relevant. We don't know what's going to happen necessarily with, with our healthcare, but I have a feeling that folks are going to be paying a lot more. I will wrap it up soon. But I will also give an example of how I see public confidence and trust eroding and how I see that playing out. We do have more major spending coming in the future. When I think about our at-capacity wastewater treatment plant, and I think about the, what's that, $31 million potentially that we'll have to spend on that, by that point, we will have the $155 middle school, the $45 million police station, I am not sure the figure for Memorial Field, but that's a lot to ask of people. And when we are faced with matters like the wastewater plant that are urgent and must be addressed in order for the city to grow and effectively expand the tax base, welcome in new residents, and grow our tax base, which is so necessary to lessen the impact of some of these projects, I think by that point, people will be very, very stressed and upset. Ultimately, to sum it up, I just worry that the spending in quick succession will be too much for people to bear financially, and that is also not to say that we will not fall on better economic times. I don't know. I feel like in a few years, things might be better for folks. But I am hearing that people think it is not the right time. I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to testify? Welcome. Thank you. It's all right. Just be careful when you step off the back, all right?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mr. City Manager, members of City Council. My name is Patrick O'Fryas, and I am joined this evening with Nicole Murray, Stephen Carter, and Matthew Doyon. I serve as the President of the Concord Police Supervisors Association, and Nicole is the President of the Patrolmen's Association. Together, our association represents the collective bargaining units of sworn officers of the Concord Police Department. The remarks I'm about to make are presented on behalf of both of our unions and the dedicated members we represent. I'd like to begin by expressing our sincere appreciation for the continued support this council has shown toward the Concord Police Department and our members. Your partnership has been essential to helping us serve our community with professionalism and dedication throughout the years. This evening, many of our officers are watching this meeting live, and a few are present. They are all hopeful that you will vote to approve the new police department. This project represents not only a much-needed building, but also a lasting investment in the safety and future of our capital city. Our current facility has served the department and the community for many years, but no longer meets the needs of a modern law enforcement agency. The building is outdated, we have outgrown our available space, and it lacks the safety and security upgrades necessary to meet current standards. A few examples of these limitations that affect daily operations include the following. One of them you've heard multiple times, our booking process. Our current booking process requires physically walking an arrestee through the department's garage and mechanic's area and into an elevator to bring them downstairs into the basement, where they can finally be secured into a booking cell for processing. This setup presents clear safety and logistical concerns, not only for our officers, but also for detainees and civilian staff who may be adjacent, in adjacent areas. It is far from ideal, and it reflects the space constraints we face every day. Another issue is limited workspace and equipment. To access or utilize certain equipment and tools, our staff must routinely move or shuffle vehicles and other items out of the way just to make room to work. We are simply out of space. Our detective offices are overcrowded with multiple investigators sharing areas that were never designed for that level of staffing. There is little privacy for sensitive case discussions or interviews, and workspace limitations affect both efficiency and professionalism. Our newly established social worker program, which provides critical outreach and crisis response services, had to retrofit an interview room and a storage closet just to create a small office space. While this program has already proven to be invaluable community resource, its effectiveness is limited by the lack of adequate facilities to support this important work. Our property division, responsible for managing, securing, and maintaining all evidence and stored property, is currently stationed directly above Mechanics Bay. This arrangement is far from optimal. The lack of proper separation of ventilation between, between vehicle maintenance areas and evidence storage presents environmental and security risks. It also makes it difficult to maintain proper chain of custody standards and evidence integrity. In a modern facility, these critical functions would be housed in purpose-built, secure spaces designed to meet accreditation and best practice standards. These daily inefficiencies and limitations take valuable time away from our mission of serving the public and ensuring safety. Another issue is parking. Our department also faces serious parking constraints. We have only 10 onsite parking spaces for all available employees. This includes both sworn and civilian staff. Many are forced to find parking off-site before beginning their shifts. Even simple challenges such as limited parking and cramped workspaces create frustration and negatively influence the start of an officer's shift every single day. While I have only presented a few of these daily limitations, a force of challenges is lengthy and continuing to grow. A new facility is critical to addressing these issues of capacity and safety. It will, it will allow us to meet current and future staffing needs, properly store and process evidence, and maintain compliance with accreditation standards and nationally-recognized best practices. These improvements are not simply about convenience, they are essential to ensuring that we can continue to provide the highest level of public safety for the residents of Concord. This project also has a direct impact on officer morale and retention. Our officers take great pride in serving the people of Concord, and many have been actively involved in planning phases of this project. Their participation has created a sense of ownership and excitement about the future. Investing in a modern, functional facility demonstrates to our officers that their work is valued and that their safety and professional growth matter. This investment will help us retain experienced, dedicated personnel who are committed to serving this community for years to come. I'm aware that the Concord Police Department's command staff has been consistently mindful of the financial impact associated with constructing a new headquarters. Throughout the planning and design process, they have worked closely with city officials, architects, and subject matter experts to ensure that every element of the project delivers long-term value to the community. Recognizing that this new facility represents a significant public investment, the command staff has emphasized, emphasized efficiency, durability, and adaptability, the design focuses on meeting the department's current operational needs while allowing flexibility for future growth and evolving law enforcement technology. Every decision has been made with a focus on longevity, energy efficiency, and reducing maintenance costs, ensuring that the building will serve the citizens of Concord for decades to come. This forward-looking approach reflects the department's commitment not only to fiscal responsibility, but also to providing a safe, modern, and sustainable workplace that supports effective policing well into the future. Approving this project is not, is not simply a vote for a new building, it's a vote for the future of public safety in Concord. It is a commitment to maintaining professional standards, supporting the men and women who protect our community, ensuring that our department can continue to grow and evolve alongside the city that we serve. On behalf of both unions, I want to thank the council for its ongoing support and for your thoughtful consideration of this important project. Your decision tonight will have a lasting impact on the future of our organization and our shared mission to keep New Hampshire's capital city safe for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the job that all of you do to keep us safe. Any questions? Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to testify? Welcome.
Hi. I'm Kate West. I live in Ward Nine. Dun, da, da, da. One of the things that someone that testified before me talked about was resources for people in need. There's a lot of data that shows, right, the cause of criminal activity, a lot of the time has to do with a lack of access to adequate resources. I do believe that officers, when they think about a community that's safe, and they think about a community of people that are thriving, that the hope is that they're needed less and less, right? That as people get the resources they need, and they are not in a position where they feel desperate, or they are able to thrive without engaging in criminal activity, that we would need less and less police officers. I would hope that that is a collective vision that we have, that ultimately, we are hoping that we do decrease criminal activity, and we are able to provide the resources to the people that need them. What I do think is also important to think about is, if that chart was back up there, think about all of the coexisting levers in terms of property taxes, that assessment, people's homes, the value of their homes go up to the point where if you lower the tax rate, they still end up paying more, right? If we think about how being homeless in this city in a lot of ways is criminalized, if you price people out of their homes, that's going to increase your crime rate, because there are a lot of things about being homeless that are illegal. As you heard, it's illegal to exist. There's nowhere to camp if you've lost your home. I personally think the, the really big issue is in this capital improvement project being in a long line of capital improvement projects, and the people in our community feel it, and I know that they're telling you. I heard someone say that the police station was built in 1974. I think that's 20 years newer than Runlet. So when people are sitting up here telling you that they think it might be worth it to take a pause, I really hope that you do, because in their day-to-day life, they can see a future where they're going to lose the homes that they've been paying on for 30-plus years, and the community that they've been living in for 30-plus years. I also just wanted to talk about the, the way that there was this $7 million savings that was projected, and it sounded like it was relative to a future plan and not relative to what our police officers are, like the operations budget of our, our, our current police station and the officers as things currently are. And it sounded, it's difficult for me to understand how that's seen as savings, because it's not based on a, a real number, it's based on a projected number. It feels a lot like me saying, "I'm saving $2,000 a month because I'm not leasing a BMW," instead of saying, "I'm saving $2,000 a month because I've downsized into a smaller unit." That's actually affecting my current lived reality and the way that I operate financially. So, and then ultimately, someone else brought up federal grants, and thinking about... I also just wanted to talk about the way that there was this $7 million savings that was projected, and it sounded like it was relative to a future plan and not relative to what our police officers, like the operations budget of our current police station and the officers as things currently are. And it sounded, it's difficult for me to understand how that's seen as savings, because it's not based on a real number, it's based on a projected number. It feels a lot like me saying, "I'm saving $2,000 a month because I'm not leasing a BMW," instead of saying, "I'm saving $2,000 a month because I've downsized into a smaller unit." That's actually affecting my current lived reality and the way that I operate financially. And then ultimately, someone else brought up federal grants, and thinking about, you had said that there's money that we received that you were talking about allocating to this project that was given to us because we are housing champions, is what I think you said. I just wonder what the spirit of that really was, and whether or not we would be honoring the spirit of that by building a police station. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks very much.
Thank you, Kate.
Anyone else like to testify? Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Sabrina Fries. I live in Ward Four, actually really close to where the police station would potentially be built. I'm just going to speak on a small piece of this. As part of my job, I read a lot of police reports. I specifically work with domestic violence cases, and something that I've noticed from reading those reports and looking into them, I think some other people have said this, the police officers are being asked to do a lot as part of modern policing, I think more than they're necessarily capable of. So I'm interested in the idea of improving social work and victim services, I think is something that's really necessary. So I wonder if the money for this project would be better employed supporting those services directly as opposed to through the police department, if they would be directly to those. From working with domestic violence cases, what I can say, just from my experience reading those reports, there are a lot of great people that work with victims, I work with those people directly, and they do amazing things, make the victims feel comfortable with kind of talking about probably the worst day of their lives. But I also watch a lot of body worn camera footage, and I can see that the police officers are not always trained to make those people feel comfortable and to share their story, so a lot of things get left out of the report. And I think that having someone with a different role and a different title, and potentially someone that doesn't hold a gun, can make victims feel a little bit more comfortable as the first person unseen. So I just think that maybe the services could be better employed that way. My last little thing I'll say is, I think when all you have is a hammer, every problem starts to look like a nail. I think there's a lot of problems in our world and in our city that require tools other than hammers, and I think the money for this project could be better served towards those tools, as opposed to potentially building housing from our hammers.
Thank you. Any questions? Council Secu.
Thank you, Your Honor. So my question is, I know you said if we can use this money toward supporting the work that you guys do every day, and thank you for all you do. Do you see this police station, I'm not saying the plan that you have in front of you, do you think it's important to have a police station, based on whatever you heard and what you read?
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that part. No, I don't think so. I think that the money could be better used for other services that aren't housed in a police station.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else like to testify? Going once, going twice. All right. I declare the hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, that brings us to item 30A.
It is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18 Parking, Article 18-1, Stopping Standing in Parking, Handicap Parking, to clarify parking requirements for public accessible parking spaces and time limit requirements.
Mr. City Clerk, I'm the City Manager, sorry.
Your Honor, members of the council, staff is coordinated with general services and field verify the city's on-street accessible spaces, and those accessible spaces located on city surface parking lots. The ordinance that you have in front of you, update Schedule 18 to both reflect the actual public accessible spaces and specify the applicable time limit for use of these spaces where applicable. The parking committee at their August meeting provided staff with directions to proceed directly to the city council with these amendments once they are prepared.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing on item 30A. Would anyone like to testify? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 30B.
It is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title IV Zoning Code, Chapter 28 Zoning Ordinance, zoning districts and allowable uses by amending Section 28-2-4K, Table of Accessory Uses, Article 28-5, Supplemental Standards, Section 28-5-9, Child Daycare Facilities, and the Glossary.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Honor, members of the council, the city needs to update the zoning ordinance to be consistent with statutory changes, and we will recommend the following amendments to the zoning ordinance: to amend the accessory use table to allow family-based childcare daycare facilities by right as accessory to any principal residential use in any district, and to revise the accessory use table to allow non-family-based childcare facilities. Also revise the definition of child daycare facility according to the ordinance. Update the standards set within the supplemental standards, Section 28-5-9. The planning board reviewed the proposed amendments at the September meeting, unanimously recommended the adoption by the city council, and the approval of these will bring the zoning ordinance to compliance with state law.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to testify on item 30B? Seeing none, hearing is closed. Madam City Clerk, item 30C.
It is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title IV Zoning Code, Chapter 28 Zoning Ordinance by amending the Glossary.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Honor, members of the council, as a result of Senate Bill 283, the city must update its zoning ordinance by amending the Glossary to include a revised definition of below-grade area, as well as revise the existing definition of floor area ratio to expressly exclude below-grade areas for new construction. The planning board reviewed these proposed amendments in September, unanimously recommended adoption by the city council. Glad to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to testify on item 30C? Seeing none, I'll declare this public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 30D.
It is a resolution re adopting the City of Concord's Housing and Community Development Plan.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Honor, Mr. Thompson, would you approach?
Welcome, Mr. Thompson.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This being part of the city's process with the Community Development Block Grant, I do have a script that I am required to read in order to be compliant with HUD regulations. I would note for those that are here, there are handouts available for all of the CDBG projects that have public hearings here tonight in the back of the room. This is the proposed Concord Housing and redevelopment, Community Development Plan, which identifies needs currently exist or anticipated within the three years. The city is required to have a plan updated no more than every three years in order to be eligible for federal funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program. This plan provides the basis for the city's housing and community development objectives. And to apply for CDBG funds, the Housing and Community Development Plan can be no older than three years. The current plan was adopted in 2023. There are no changes proposed in the language of the 2023 plan. This will likely be updated in more detail following the completion of the city's master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I'll open the public hearing on item 30D. Would anyone like to testify on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, item 30E.
It is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to submit an application in an amount of up to $500,000, and to accept an appropriate grant proceeds of up to $500,000 of Community Development Block Grant Funds to support families in transitions by Centennial Square renovation project creating four new units of affordable housing.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Tim? Again, good evening. This is a proposed application for Community Development Finance Authority for up to $500,000 in housing funds. Of the grant funds, $30,000 would be retained by the city for administrative costs associated with the project, and the remainder of the funds, the benefit of, would be sub-granted to families in transition. Families in transition would be using the funds to renovate office space into housing for low and moderate income households. The project's proposed one unit at Five Market Lane and three units at Nine Oddfellows Avenue, which is in Bicentennial Square.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Mr. Thompson, is this an example of the city partnering with a nonprofit to provide more affordable housing?
It certainly is.
Is this the first instance of this?
It is not.
Off the top of your head, how often have we participated with nonprofits?
The city has been involved with Community Development Block Grants dating back into the 1980s and beyond. We've approximately been recipients of over $25 million of Community Development Block Grant Funds over that time period.
Any idea how many affordable units that's created?
I do not have a total number off the top of my head, but it would be in the hundreds.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Would anyone like to testify on item 30? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, item 30F.
It is a resolution adopting an anti-displacement and relocation policy statement and procedures in support of the city's Community Development Block Grant applications to the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority to support families in transitions by Centennial Square renovation project at Nine Oddfellows Avenue and Five Market Lane.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, are you deferring to Mr. Thompson, Mr. City Manager?
I am.
Sorry, I should have ganged these two hearings together, I'm sorry.
We've got a couple more after this as well. This housing and relocation, anti-displacement relocation assistance plan is again required by the Community Development Block Grant Program. The plan outlines the measures required for CDBG projects that involve any potential displacement or relocations of persons or businesses. If the city were to undertake a CDBG project where it involved displacement or relocation, they would have to follow this plan. The plan outlines the measures that would take to find compatible, suitable housing for those persons or businesses that are displaced or relocated. In this particular project, where these spaces are already vacant within the buildings, there is no displacement or relocation anticipated as part of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, item 30G.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $678,000 in the Concord Stables redevelopment project, CIP 664, to support the remediation of hazardous building materials at the Concord Stables Building, 111.5 Warren Street, and accepting the sum of $678,000 in unmatched grant funds from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield's cleanup program for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Honor, members of the council, the source of the grant is the bipartisan infrastructure law funds, and there is no match or cost share required. Upon accepting the funding, the city staff will work with the U.S. EPA program office to prepare a request for proposal for hired qualified environmental professionals. Staff will also work with a selected QEP to prepare a work plan and schedule. Anticipated cleanup work will be commenced in 2026.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? All right. Anyone in the audience who would like to testify on item 30G? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, item 30H.
It's a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement between the City of Concord and LSE Ursa Minor LLC.
Mr. City, thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Honor, members of the council, LSE Ursa Minor plans to build, own, and operate a photovoltaic solar facility, anticipating an estimated nameplate capacity of approximately 4.98 megawatts, alternating current, and has leased a 36.5-acre parcel from LA Broschu Inc. for the purpose, the proposed development is renewable generation facility defined under RSA 72:73. That, colon, 72:74 authorize communities to enter into the payment in lieu of tax agreements with renewable generation facilities upon a duly-known public hearing, which we're at tonight. Proposed payment in lieu of taxes for 20 years guarantees a payment of $1,106,664 over the course of the agreement. The payment in lieu of tax rate was calculated based on the value of the proposed project and estimated tax rate over the life of the agreement. The applicant has agreed to pay this rate on a front-loaded basis, so the payments will be higher at the beginning of the project and reduced as the equipment depreciates. In the event that the material changes for that development, the change to estimated value of the project, the city has reserved the right to renegotiate this agreement and adjust the payment in lieu of tax rate commensurate with these changes pursuant to RSA 72:74. The attached agreement that you have in front of you requires council approval after the public hearing and allowing me to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. This is a huge win both for the environment and for our taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any questions? All right, I will open the public hearing. Would anyone like to testify on item 30H? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, item 30I.
It's a resolution authorizing the City Manager to submit an application in an amount of $130,000, and to accept appropriate grant proceeds of $130,000 of Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 funds for the Concord Coalition to End Homelessness, Emergency Winter Shelter, and Resource Center operations.
Would the council object if I combined this hearing with the hearing on item 30J?
No, thank you.
All right, Madam City Clerk, would you also read item 30J?
Sure. It's a resolution adopting an anti-displacement and relocation policy statement and procedures in support of the city's Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 application to the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority for the Concord Coalition to End Homelessness, Emergency Winter Shelter, and Resource Center operations.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Your Honor, Mr. Thompson.
Mayor, members of the council, you may recall back in 2019, 2020, the federal government made available specific CDBG funds for COVID-19 pandemic. Back in 2020, the city successfully applied for and received several hundred thousand dollars for a variety of different projects. There is approximately $1.038 million left in those COVID funds for the state of New Hampshire that have not been expended, and the Community Development Finance Authority is trying to get those expended before they are clawed back by the federal government. In this particular case, this is a proposed application to the CDFA for up to $130,000 in CDBG CV funds. Of the grant funds, $16,000 would be retained by the city for administrative costs, and the remainder of the funds would be benefit of and sub-granted to the Concord Coalition to End Homelessness for estimated costs to be incurred for operating their winter emergency shelter at 230 North Main Street and the Resource Center at 238 North Main Street for the period of December 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2026. The funds requested would provide reimbursement for additional services that the coalition is providing to people experiencing homelessness in Concord that continue to be related to the pandemic. The second part of this public hearing is for the anti-displacement plan. Again, this plan outlines the measures under the Uniform Relocation Act required for CDBG projects that involve any displacement or relocation of persons or businesses. If the city were to undertake the CDBG project that involved displacement or relocation, they would follow the plan. The plan outlines the measures that the city would take in order to find comparable, suitable housing for persons or businesses displaced or relocated. No displacement or relocation will occur as a result of this project, as the project is for operating costs for the shelter and their resource center.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Thompson.
I do also wanted to note, the total number is $25.3 million of CDBG funds, and it's been since the inception of the program in 1974.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being precise. Would anyone like to testify on items 30I or 30J? Welcome back.
Yes, to see you guys again. I'll keep this super quick, I know it's really late. I just wanted to say that I support this allocation of grant money, and I would hope that we could find even more money to allocate towards the winter shelter. I'm not sure if anybody here has volunteered at the winter shelter. Great, so you must know, it is bare bones. These people are full-grown men and women sleeping on twin bunk beds, which I could imagine is not very comfortable. I haven't ever slept there myself, but I would also suggest that you guys consider maybe reallocating some of the money that you proposed for the police station to the winter shelter and other resources, as I think that would be a better use of money. Thank you. And also, I'm sorry I didn't identify myself again, but my name is Sam Mosqua, I live at 74 North State Street, and thank you for allowing me time to speak.
You have another question from Council Critic?
Just for clarification, this is an application, not an allocation yet. First, we have to get the money, then we can allocate it.
Great, well, I support the application.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, thank you for the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on these two items?
Fisto de Shimia? Thank you. I do support dislocation, and I heard she talked a little bit about it. If there's any chance that we can increase the amount of money, and I'm talking about, you know, when it comes to taxing our developers and all those kind of issues, I think we have to get more money from those areas from outside and invest in this project, because that's a critical project for homelessness. And we're talking about, you know, if we're investing, if we're working with developers, we have to identify what they're going to be paying for, as in, you know, paying taxes. I mean, we have to tax developers before we tax our homeowners or, you know, community members, because, you know, you look at some of the developers, they own a lot of large parking space, you know, they have a lot of big, I mean, big, big, you know, trucks, you know, meaning that we would have to look into, like, if we spend a lot of money, taxpayers' money, on the roads, fixing roads, fixing whatever parking spaces, drainage, I mean, sewer, you know, those kind of things, if we're working with taxpayers, they have to pay for those small, small, you know, items we have, so we can, we can tax them, we tax them, we can pay for those shelters, we can pay more, and we can add more money. So my point is, how can we tax our developers more than we tax our homeowners or community in general, and then we invest more in homelessness? And adding more money to that, I mean, funds to that, it would eliminate the fact that, you know, after winter, some of these people struggle. So how can we make, come up with an idea that would seem to be a permanent solution to this issue, homelessness? So that's my testimony today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks very much. Would anyone else like to testify on these two items, thirty L and thirty J? I'm sorry, thirty I and thirty J. All right. Close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, item thirty K.
It is a public hearing regarding the status of the following: $25,000 in community development block grant planning study funds subgranted to the families in transition, and $25,000 subgranted to Community Justice Center.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager? Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the required status update from the CDBG program. As the council may recall, these two projects were both granted, applications through CDBG to receive $25,000 each for planning studies. As a result, one of those studies resulted in the application that you just heard earlier tonight for families in transition. Their study was for the determination of the feasibility and estimated costs for the renovation of those office spaces at Bicentennial Square. The estimated total cost of that project is approximately $800,000, of which they are now seeking $500,000 of CDBG funds. The second project was the Community Justice Center, which, as you may recall, was a combination of the New Hampshire Legal Assistance, 603 Legal Aid, and the Disability Rights Center of New Hampshire, looking to consolidate their operations into a single site. They have conducted that study, and they have determined the estimated cost for that would be $5 million, and they are still exploring options for financing eventual project.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Thank you, sir. Would anyone like to testify on item thirty K? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. This brings us to our public hearing.
We have a two-minute recess.
Two-minute recess has been requested. Two-minute recess. All right. Reconvening the meeting, we now are in the public hearing action phase of our meeting. Madam City Clerk, item thirty one.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18 Parking, Standing in Parking, Handicap Parking, to clarify parking requirements for public accessible parking spaces and time limit requirements.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move and approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The motion passes. Madam City Clerk, item thirty two.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title IV Zoning Code, Chapter 28, zoning ordinance, Article 28-2, zoning districts and allowable uses, by amending Section 28-2-4K, table of accessory uses, Article 28-5 supplemental standards, Section 28-5-9, daycare facilities, and the glossary.
Move and approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I'm sorry, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item thirty three.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title IV Zoning Code, Chapter 28, zoning ordinance, by amending the glossary.
Move and approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion passes. Madam City Clerk, item thirty four.
It is a resolution readopting the City of Concord's housing and community development plan.
Move and approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item thirty five.
It is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to submit an application in an amount of up to $500,000 and to accept an appropriate grant proceeds of up to $500,000 of community development block grant funds to support families in transitions' bicentennial square renovation project, creating four new units of affordable housing.
Move and approve?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes on the requisite two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, item thirty six.
It is a resolution adopting an anti-displacement and relocation policy statement and procedures in support of the city's community development block grant application to the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority to support families in transitions' bicentennial square renovation project at nine Oddfellows Avenue and Five Market Lane.
Move and approve? Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion passes. Madam City Clerk, item thirty seven.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $678,000 in the Concord Stables redevelopment project to support the remediation of hazardous building materials at the Concord Stables Building on Warren Street, and accepting the sum of $678,000 in unmatched grant funds from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield's cleanup program for this purpose.
Move and approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it by the requisite two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, item thirty eight.
It is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement between the City of Concord and LSE Ursa Minor LLC.
Move and approve?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item thirty nine.
It is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to submit an application in an amount of $130,000 and to accept an appropriate grant proceeds of $130,000 of community development block grant COVID-19 funds for the Concord Coalition to End Homelessness, Emergency Winter Shelter, and Resource Center operations.
Move and approve? Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just feel like I just wanted to say that, as a footnote to this, that I think that we, the fact that we don't open the winter shelter by weather rather than by date is frustrating. That's awful.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it by the requisite two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, item forty.
It is a resolution adopting the anti-displacement and relocation policy statement and procedures in support of the city's community development block grant COVID-19 application to the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority for the Concord Coalition to End Homelessness, Emergency Winter Shelter, and Resource Center operations.
Move and approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item forty one.
Public hearing regarding the status of the following: $25,000 in community development block grant planning study funds to subgranted to the families in transition, and $25,000 subgranted to Community Justice.
Thank you.
Move and approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item forty two.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $45,500,000 in the Police Headquarters Project, CIP 643, for the construction of the new police department building and authorizing the issuance of general fund, general obligation bonds notes in the sum of $45,500,000 for this purpose.
Move and approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Counselor Horn?
I would have to, I would agree with Mr. Reiner that we cannot live in a vacuum, and I would like to see some compromise. First off, touring the police station was one of the very first things I did when I was elected, so I'm well aware of the needs and inadequacies in our current police station, but we cannot ignore the juxtaposition of just six days ago, asking the community to bring food to the polls to help feed hungry neighbors, and now, six days later, we're asking them to accept a $45 million project. It's also hard to ignore that we all campaigned up until six days ago on fiscal responsibility and working to lower taxes or keep them level, and again, we've won our seats and seem to have forgotten those promises less than a week ago. We know we're at a disadvantage with having a large portion of our property being non-taxable, with state properties, et cetera, but this huge project is a hard pill to swallow on top of the new middle school, Memorial Field, the clubhouse, and the fact that even the operating of this property will cost nearly half a million dollars more per year is overwhelming, not to mention that we are just a few months away from learning the outcome of the revaluation that has proven throughout the state to significantly raise taxes on mobile homes and lower-valued properties. It's impossible for me to ignore the pleas of the taxpayers. When I say that, I also include renters in that, because they do pay taxes through the property owner. Unfortunately, rent will never go down, even if taxes happen to go down, but it is hard to ignore the pleas of the many people that have reached out in despair and fear of losing their homes if we continue these tax increases, especially when we're not offering a way to counteract this spending. We just had to raise taxes a month ago because our revenue is not meeting our own expectations that we budgeted for, but we're not providing a plan to right this strain and start increasing revenue to help pay for all of these very expensive projects. I feel like we're approaching this in a very backwards manner, and we need to reassess all of these projects and actually come up with a plan to raise revenue before we continue to spend.
Counselor? Counselor Schultz?
Thank you, Your Honor. There's no way I could be as eloquent as Counselor Horn was, but certainly the section that she spoke to from today's testimony also stuck out to me that, you know, to have all of these conversations about these big-ticket items, assume, you know, it feels like a vacuum is simply just not the case in how folks pay their property taxes, or, thank you very much for mentioning the fact that renters pay through their rent. I appreciate that, too. I'm wondering if we could take a beat, a couple weeks to a month, to have a few more clarifying points to see if anything could be made more affordable in what we've been presented. I think, I think everyone agrees that there's a need for, for a number of really smart, good reasons, we need a new something. Station is what I believe we need, is a new station, and I also appreciate the fact that we have a building that we bought for this purpose, but can we look for more cost savings with but can we look for more cost savings with some more discussion, with more questions? Can we take a beat and have that conversation and look for savings? I think is the thing that most concerns me. Can we both find ways to pay for this and provide safety in the fairest way possible if we took a couple weeks to a month to really suss out a few more questions?
What specific questions do you have, Counselor? If I may ask?
I'm sorry. Say that again.
Which specific questions do you have that you'd like answers to?
Well, we went over the bond issues, but have we discussed in any way, shape, or form the possibility of seeking funding from the state? Have we sought ways to save money by working with the county and the state? Is there anything that benefits us sharing a city with the police academy and their wonderful firing range and all of the assets that are available to us there potentially? I can't say that I'm an expert in this. I am an expert in how budgeting is for people of my district because I also struggle with those conversations, and I just want to make sure that we have the most palatable, affordable project possible. So that's what I seek.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I'm aware that some counselors have indicated that they would like to have some time to mull over the things that have been proposed to us. Counselor, I have to say, I think that the staff has already looked into many of the things that you're talking about, and I've certainly asked the staff about what impact a delay to redesign would have, and basically that jives it back into 2028 and whatever costs there are then. But I respect your concern. I respect the concerns everybody has said. To that- to that point, I'm wondering, how many counselors would be available to meet next Monday, the 17th of November, if we were to table this item and reconvene at that time? I only see four people.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm checking.
One, two, three, four, five. All right. People can check their calendar.
I will not be present.
All right. Counselor Kretovic, how about on November 24th at 7:00 P.M.?
24?
That's Thanksgiving weekend, Thanksgiving week, rather.
Which day? Monday.
Monday, the 24th.
Yeah. Okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Counselor Hooken?
Counselor Hooken?
Is your hand up?
I don't think you have it.
Counselor, is your hand up?
This was just a thumb.
All right. You're not available.
I'm not sure at this time, but I don't want to commit to something at this point.
He needs to talk to his wife.
Uh huh.
(laughing). I couldn't resist. I apologize.
Jenny.
We knew it.
I know it, Jenny. He's my friend. I can tell you that.
Counselor Hooken? So I'm struggling a little bit on why we're going to delay this. I went to a public hearing last month, and the city staff did an outstanding job answering questions, and the questions that were presented to staff and their consultant were followed up at the last city council meeting and was explained explicitly what they were doing. So I'm trying to understand why we're going to delay this. I do have some questions relative to operating and maintenance costs. I have questions relative, you know, the 45,000 to 70,000, whatever it is, but, you know, I'm not sure everyone understands that, as I understand it, maybe I'm wrong, is that the building, the new building, is going to be a hardened building where certain tasks and only those tasks can occur in this area where some of the existing building that we're going to renovate is going to have more administrative staff and more civilian-type activities. And so I'm not sure we can, you know, if I have questions about the size of the thing, I'm not sure that those are going to change between now and whatever alternative date we want to choose.
To be honest, Counselor, I share your thoughts.
Thank you.
Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you. I would say, at least for myself, we just got a completely different mechanism for financing it. So I asked a question earlier. Obviously, I have not had a chance to figure out what the cost, what the potential cost savings could be, doing it in one fashion versus another, and I haven't looked to see how that jives with what our current fund balance is. So I personally have some questions related to that. We certainly have heard a lot from people tonight, and I think there were questions raised as well at the public meeting about sort of the size difference. I think most capital projects we've done over the last, I don't know, 20 years, there's always been some pushback on size and an effort to try and right-size things. I don't know whether that's appropriate here or not. I- I still struggle with trying to understand exactly what programming is in the 70,000-square-foot sort of total building. I understand the need for the addition, obviously, to get sort of the level four. I think somebody suggested, why don't we just build a building? I did- I think I asked that question at our last meeting, and basically, if we just, you know, drop the building and build, you know, 40,000 square feet of level four, it's going to cost us more. I accept that. But what I struggle a little bit with is if we're seeing a square foot price, and I'm not saying, you know, I think somebody said, oh, we might save 14 million if we cut 20,000 square feet. I think that's doubtful, personally, that it would be that much, but if you had to spend a million dollars to look at potential redesign, to, you know, drop 10,000 square feet, I don't know. Maybe that saves you money. Maybe it's worth it. Those are the sorts of things that I would like to sort of better understand, at least personally.
Counselor Brady Sexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that there is a great deal of urgency in moving forward with this project. I heard loud and clear from, you know, our female staff that they have inadequate facilities. That's unacceptable in every way. That needs to be addressed. I've also heard from staff that there's fear around some of the structural issues that give them exposure to some significantly dangerous people, as well as our officers, in terms of some of the holding spaces. It's just, it's unacceptable, and we need to move forward on this. That said, I think that, you know, there are some good faith reasons to take a very brief pause, I would support, in order to look at the new, you know, information that we got, to hear more feedback from the public as well as the press. The first time I've seen it, this is the first time the public has seen it. I think that's fair. I don't want to slow walk this to death, and I don't want this to be used as a reason to not do this. Like, if people don't support this, you should just say you don't support this and not drag this out further because it's going to cost more, and it is currently a dangerous situation, and we shouldn't have our employees in the current structure. So I feel that I'd be okay with a short pause to digest this information. I think that that's good governance, and the public deserves to be able to digest it as well as us, but I hope that we can move forward quickly.
Counselor Sexton. Counselor McNamara.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I am going to second what every, at least the two counselors that spoke before me. When I was coming today, I wanted to see whatever we can discuss here, and I heard it loud and clear during my time campaigning, and I want to say thank you to Ward Ait for giving me this opportunity to sit at this table. None of us here take things lightly. We all hold our responsibility. I talk to every counselor at this table, and I can say nobody takes things lightly. And I heard loud and clear from Ward Ait resident that the tax is taxing them out of Concord. That being said, I support having a very modern and affordable and good police station. And for that reason, and for the new plan that we have today, I would need more time to digest in the two weeks or the one week I support. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McNamara.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, we've learned from history that if we put it off, kick the can down the road, it doesn't happen, or it's too expensive. And I've also heard a lot about this building. It's not just a building. This is a place that houses the men and women who support our community, who provide safety at their life's risks at times, and emotional, physical. And why wouldn't we want to support that? Because I think most of our platforms here in running for election is safety. That's the number-one thing that our community wants. So I'm willing to take the time, I think I need the time, to digest this, but I don't want to go more than a week because I- we can't push this off into December. No way can we push it off to January. So I'm willing to take a week and come back and discuss this, discuss the ideas that the city has given back to us, the three options, which I appreciate. That's what I'm willing to do, is take one week and come back and take a look at those and have a discussion and make a decision.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Keach.
If a motion's in order, I'd like to make them unless it's further discussion.
I would just like, I will entertain your discussion in a moment. I would just like to echo some of the things that were said by members of the council. You know, I think it's unacceptable that female officers don't have adequate locker room space. I think it's unacceptable that civilian staff have to worry about running into a prisoner, you know, being walked through the building. I think it's unacceptable that children have to be in the lobby at the same time that sexual offenders are coming in to register. I think it's unacceptable that our police officers are eating their lunch at their desk and don't have a decent place to gather and to share information. I think I ran on public safety, and I feel about that very strongly about that, and I think our men and women in uniform and our police social workers and our civilian staff and our meter readers, you know, our parking enforcement people deserve to have a decent place. We, earlier this year, approved salaries, salary increases for these folks because we valued them, we wanted to retain the people we have, we want to recruit more top-level people, and to recruit somebody and put them into an overcrowded, you know, under-equipped station is just not acceptable, and it's fantasy to think you're going to be able to keep people when they have to work in those kinds of environments. I'm extremely sensitive to the tax impact. I also am very sensitive to the fact that, as Counselor McNamara said, if we kick this down the road, it's not going to get cheaper, you know? And based on my conversations with staff, any significant change to the current plan is going to have to go back to the architects, which is going to cost more architectural design fees and which is probably going to force us to have to build this, start building it in 2027 rather than 2026. So I'm absolutely happy to take a beat, and Counselor Kretovic, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it. I don't want to repeat things that other people have said. I think the most important conversation at the table is, besides the fact that we keep kicking this down to the future, the way policing was done in 1974 when our police department moved in there is not even close to the way it was or it is operating today, that we should be taking pride in our police department and how they've expanded their community policing programs, they've expanded the social services. The outreach that we do in our community above and beyond the infraction of a law is well-deserving of a space to operate that is safe and that is, everyone in our community should be welcomed to be there as part of that community element that we're looking for. I think the accreditation of our police department, the risk factors that we heard from our own police department and former police chiefs that haven't worked for the city in over 16 years, it speaks volumes to the risk that we all know exists. We were supposed to take this up in 2004, and we kicked it down the road. 2019, we kicked it down the road. '22, '23, '24, and now here we are in '25, and we want to talk about delays again. If we're going to support our officers and the people that work in that facility, our civilians and our community, we should be having this conversation realistically now and not making it more expensive a week from now, two weeks from now, a month from now, six months from now, a year from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognize, Counselor, for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion that we recess this discussion-
Table it.
I'm sorry. Table this issue until Monday, the 17th, and I will say, I'm supportive and ready to vote in favor this evening, but in deference to a lot of your good comments around the table, I don't think a week matters a whole lot, but what I will not see happen is this ground to a slow death, which other projects have sometimes happened to, and other people adopt that strategy. So I absolutely will be on the lookout for that.
What was your intention?
7:00 P.M. 7:00 P.M. Yes. Well, I'll defer to you, Mayor, whenever you like to schedule it.
I'll second your motion. Moved and seconded, Counselor Schlosser.
So, Counselor Keach, I agree with you, and I agree that we need this building. I would prefer two weeks out of the scheduling of-
Thank you.
-some of the counselors here. So if that's acceptable to you to go to the 24th, I'm- this is not kicking it down the road.
Yeah.
It's just doing due diligence, reviewing these new financial numbers.
Thank you.
I think that the staff has done a great job in the design, the police department has done a lot of work in envisioning not just what we need now, but what we're going to need in 20 and 50 years. What is the future of policing in this community? The change in demography, we're the second-oldest state in the country, the number of community and mental health calls are increasing. We may need to dramatically increase our community policing and our mental health, but I think they've done a lot of work in thinking through the, making sure that this building will fit the future, having flexible and adaptable. So I think it's a very strong design, but I think out of deference to the changed information we got today, I would prefer a slight delay, not kicking it down the road, and if that's acceptable, Counselor Keach.
Make your motion.
I'm just, if that's acceptable.
Friendly amendment or hostile?
Friendly amendment.
I'm just able to that.
All right. So the motion is to table this item until 7:00 P.M. Monday, November 24th. Yes. Counselor Kurtz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Point of clarification, because this is an appropriation, we do need 10 votes regardless of-
Correct.
-who is present.
Correct.
So, Madam Clerk, did we have a confirmation of how many counselors could attend on the 24th? Because I thought I heard on the 17th only eight, which would-
I did not hear that on this one.
No.
No, okay.
All but one on the 17th.
I think also one on the 24th.
And I think Counselor Foote is trying to-
Then Jenny, could you make a decision?
Okay. Thank you. I misheard around the table and wanted to make sure we weren't setting ourselves up for disaster.
Right.
Because I also feel important to move this forward. Thank you.
All right. We ready for the vote? Is everybody clear on the vote? The vote is tabled, this item until 7:00 P.M. Monday, November 24th, when we'll reconvene in this chamber. All right? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The item is tabled. That brings us to reports.
Mr. Gill.
Good job. Did you get a minute, Dave, to-
I just turned this on. I preloaded this, so hopefully it works.
All right.
Modern technology. It's worse, maybe?
She's okay. She's resilient. I can help.
Modify.
It's a great show in Boston. First ones.
Eat them all.
The box is empty.
That's what I'm trying to do.
She always does her nine.
How old were they? Did you buy those?
I got those for you a couple years ago.
Those were worse.
Were those good?
What?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Came in early today and preloaded it.
That's my point.
Yeah, so we just, this report and the rules, conversation about the item 24 consent. That's what's left.
It's thinking. It's thinking.
Hundred percent of the time. We could just do this.
I don't have any good looks anymore. I ever had.
Always.
The PowerPoint's on the website if we just want to...
I think we shared.
How about we do it right now while they're doing that?
Can't even get on the...
Oh, can't.
The rest of us can't see David.
Mr. Holdley, would you please come forward?
David, I think they can see it all. They can all see it.
Never wanting to miss an opportunity to embarrass somebody, an employee. Mr. Holdley, Jeff Holdley has been appointed as your new general services director.
Nice. Woo!
He's been active for quite some time and he's done a fantastic job.
That's great.
We went through a national search process and Jeff came out on top.
All right.
Congratulations, Jeff.
Congratulations, Jeff.
Very exciting.
Mama be proud.
Start without your data. Confirm it was in your...
I need you here, David.
I don't know what the hell you people are thinking. How do they do math?
Betty said that?
And if you know her, that's exactly...
Yeah, I believe that. I believe she's not that extreme about it.
She was my fifth grade teacher.
Oh, my God.
She stops me when I drive by.
Wasn't tough enough.
She wasn't tough enough.
Yeah, tougher, she got older, experienced.
Right, she tried to tame me.
I call that seasoned.
It was there.
Oh, my gosh.
About 30 minutes, I'm going to have to take a vote.
Yeah.
I think everyone's kind of hard now.
It's not open on PowerPoint. That's a PDF? PDF.
You know, finishing our comments for...
It started acting up.
Here we go. Yeah, all right.
Look at that, that's fantastic.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor.
Full screen.
Oh, no.
Oh, my goodness.
I think, I think...
Click X, click X.
X, X, hang on.
It's a new version released today.
Good evening, Mayor, Member City Council, City Manager. I'm David Gill, the city's Parks and Recreation Director.
David, can you move the microphone closer to you? Thank you.
Better?
Yeah.
Joined is Eric from VHB and Chris from Hunter Sports. Just a quick review, the past two years, we have been working on the master plan for Memorial Field. Couple, couple slides of the history is made up of different parcels. The first one was donated in 1926 and the early 70s. We did acquire additional land and it's approximately 36 acres right now. Memorial Field today, I think everybody's pretty familiar with it. 36 acre park, two football fields, track, baseball, softball, little league, multi-sport fields for spring and fall sports, tennis courts, basketball, and obviously some cross-country ski trails in the wintertime. The current site, I think everybody's familiar, the 1970s expansion that we did does not anticipate the sports of today. The two football fields, the lacrosse fields, boys and ladies cannot fit into the field. The track needs to be replaced. Concord School District is not going to be using the track as of spring due to the poor condition. Site drainage, I've got a couple of pictures of the poor site drainage, drainage has failed over the years. The football bleachers and baseball bleachers need to be replaced. All fields are grass. There's a growing conversation in the community, can we have artificial turf on one or two fields? Parking challenges, ADA challenges. I was reminded earlier when I shared the PowerPoint that the field lights at Memorial Field, we have three athletic fields, baseball, softball, and football. All the field lights do not work to the point that we have to rent portable lights to have night football games. Just a couple of pictures of the site issues. 1970s drainage is clogged, failed. We do have a lot of standing water. We are getting lots more heavy rainstorms and when we get an inch plus, the current site holds a lot of water, it isn't a bowl, so it's kind of natural. That red triangle, nice, not really triangle, rectangle is approximately a 1970s addition. That is approximately where most of the water problems are. It's also a couple of feet lower than the main football field. And you can see on the right, we do have some issues with drainage and when the frost comes out, the fields aren't really playable. For everybody, just remember, back in June 2023, the city and the school district formed a partnership, jointly funded the master planning phase, this is what we're reporting on tonight. Master plan is just a 40,000-foot look down at a complex. Does it have all the amenities you want, all the amenities you need, and then try to come up with a plan? We had a first public meeting back in September, we had another one in February 24. February 24, we had about 120 people at the meeting. We did have breakout groups and have conversations of, you know, what does everybody want with a new master plan? I also met with the students at the Runlet and at the high school to figure out what the student athletes want, the other ones that are using the fields. Community listening sessions, kind of what we heard, is similar to what we knew, address the drainage issues, more parking, improve fields with lights, increase accessibility, replace the aging bleachers, new track, you know, keep all the current users, plus field hockey to the complex. Right now, Concord School District uses Rollins Park in the fall for field hockey, just because there's not enough field space at the complex as it is. Add locker rooms, updated bathroom facilities, you know, keep and improve walking trails. They like the cross-country ski trails connected over to the White Farm area and then the desire to have artificial turf fields. I'm going to turn it over to Eric to kind of go over some of the site constraints of the complex.
Thank you, David. My name is Eric Drad, I'm the Director of Land Development for VHB in our Bedford, New Hampshire office. And our initial task here was to just really dive into the existing conditions, understand the property, what we're up against out there. So we did a full existing condition survey, understand the property lines, full natural resource evaluation to understand the wetlands, streams, what those constraints are doing to the property, understanding those buffer zones, topography, doing the, understanding what the grades are, which ties into the ADA challenges, drainage challenges. And then also complemented that with geotechnical exploration to understand the subsurface conditions, to understand what's really going on beneath the ground, what the soils are doing and what they're not doing, which is primarily allowing the water to infiltrate, which is causing all of those flooding problems that you saw in those pictures. So setting that all up kind of sets the stage for us being able to place the various pieces for the master plan. Next.
And we also took a high-level look just to evaluate the existing parking out there. I think most folks understand that parking can be challenging when multiple events are going on at the facility. So currently out there, you know, on the existing lot in red there, there's about 128 parking spaces. We took a look at what's available on the street parking, a lot of people park on the street, it's about 136 total. And then on the state-owned land during off-peak hours, that they're not using the lots, is an additional 155. So about 419 total parking spaces in the vicinity to max out the parking demand out there. So I know we were charged with also trying to identify ways to increase the parking on site to reduce the parking issues in the area. Do you want to pass it over to Chris?
Hi, good evening. My name is Chris Huntress, I'm with Hunter Sports, we're landscape architects, engineers, and we specialize in athletic facilities. We've been working with VHB and with the city since 2023, if not before, to look at master planning and conceptualizing the program and how we might be able to get things to better fit and improve some of the issues that you find here in Memorial Field. So we had the first listening session back in 2023, where we didn't present plans, we presented opportunities and constraints, we presented the, you know, the issues that were on the site and just listened. Some of the things that came out of that, we heard things like, you know, obviously a new, a new 400-meter track was important, expanding that track to accommodate soccer within the confines of the track were also important. 2,000 seats at the track may not be necessary, you could potentially do less there. However, there was strong desire at that time to have a second competition field with a larger seating plan that was not part of, that was not surrounded by a 400-meter track. So we looked at ways that we could accommodate some of those and improve your existing facilities, both in place where they are today and how we might expand and improve on that. So this was a concept option A that was developed back in 2024 after those listening sessions. This does include a 400-meter, eight-lane track with 750 seats. It did widen the existing, the existing field within to accommodate soccer. We included a new fieldhouse. That fieldhouse would have new ADA compliant bathrooms, locker rooms, concessions, and storage areas for maintenance equipment and like. We provided a full-size competition field with 2,000 seats and sand in the location of tennis now, really because of its proximity and need for arrival. We were looking at ways that we could improve someone's arrival to the campus and make it most, most efficient, but also make it most attractive. And removing some of the smaller fences that surrounded tennis and moving those back and expanding the views as you arrive into the site was something that everyone seemed to find to be a positive. At that time, we recommended rebuilding baseball in place and renovating softball. As Eric had said, we, we had an eye towards parking. I think we went from about existing, you've got about 128 spaces on site right now, we added 56 to that in this, in this current plan under, under option A. The other thing that's there was it moved and reconstructed tennis. You've got 10 tennis courts and two basketball courts. We moved those down into kind of the southern corner, if you will, the, the lower right-hand side of the, of the courts and then connected all these with ADA accessible walkways. Some of these fields, being the track and field and the baseball field and the primary competition field, included sports lighting. One of the other things we were tasked with is better understanding how we could phase this plan and could we do the first series of improvements without impacting the city's ability to, to continue to construct or improve these further down the road. So this was a plan that looked at taking those, that first scope of work, being the track and field, the parking improvements and the fieldhouse, and building those, leaving tennis courts in place, leaving the other facilities in place, allowing you to do drainage improvements and things on the lower fields while we work up in the, up in the upper parking lot. And at that point, I will hand it back to Eric to talk about drainage and other improvements. So this plan up here is showing primarily the major drainage improvements that we would anticipate on the site, which, which really needs to raise up the lower grades, probably three to four feet. And that will allow us to get in some adequate drainage to be able to discharge out to the wetland areas as it does today. Currently, the, the drainage pictures that David had up before are discharged and beneath the existing elevation of the wetland that's out there, so they're, they're essentially filled with water. It takes a lot of pressure to, to get those pipes to, to get water moving. Additionally, there at the bottom of that screen, there's that thick blue line, there's a collapsed, I think it's a 36-inch culvert going into the state property, which during the heavier storm events, that is significantly reduced in flow, which is why I believe we're experiencing some of that backup into the fields during those major storm events and then over time it's slowly retreating. So one of the first fixes would be that culvert, which would help alleviate those heavy storm flow events, but ultimately you still need to raise those grades due to the poor soils and high groundwater in that area. So we, this is a very schematic drainage design as we're looking at the fields and what fields are going to go where. There are opportunities where we can utilize the field footprints to be able to store and manage stormwater beneath those fields to reduce any surface basins that could take up a little bit more space.
So this is the cost estimates from the 2004 option As, we're calling it. Final design and permitting, which would be the next phase if we were to move forward, is $1.2 million. We did put down some suggested phasing costs. With any master plan, you include, we included the wants and the needs, so to speak. We've, one A and one B are basically the needs, you know, to improve the field, improve the park and improve the drainage. And the other ones can, can go down as needed. One of the conversations I picked up earlier, grant funds, back in the spring, I, we did send a letter to the city to apply for a land and water conservation grant. In September, we did get notified that they do want us to apply for a full grant round that's due the end of December. That would be up to a $500,000 grant, so we'll continue to look at... Bless you. We'll continue to look at those opportunities to bring in non-taxpayer money. Back in Ju, June, I think it was, 2025, the city council formed a subcommittee, two city councilors along with two school board members. Councilor Foote and Councilor Fantasy was representing the city council. Councilor Richard Higgins represented the Concord School District. In total, they had seven meetings, several of them had public there to give input and give ideas. Ensure the master goal was to ensure the master plan addressed all the site problems, make sure the proposed fields are the best locations in the complex, make sure the new track improves the ability to host track and field meets, increase onsite parking, ADA accessibility, and again, to continue to that, can you have the master plan built in phases? Real quickly, the same things. The subcommittee updated parking plan as presented in the original plan. We added about 180 parking spaces. We moved the track to a lower southwest corner of the complex. That is a grass playing field, two softball fields where the running track is right now. New fieldhouse, the fieldhouse has four team rooms, public bathroom concessions and equipment storage. That was one of the wants from the athletes. New maintenance building, new concession bathroom. And the subcommittee also expressed support for the city to look into purchasing the state land to the west for potential future parking needs going forward. Turn it back over to Chris to talk about the...
Thanks, Dave. So this plan was a result of the conversations that we had with the, with the joint subcommittee and some of the direction that, that we took. It does a couple of things. One is it expands significantly the parking along the east side up near South Fruit Street by 180 spaces from that 128, it adds 180, so it gets up to about 300, more than doubling the amount of parking on site while still including bus and parent pickup drop-off areas and handicap parking and accessibility. The fieldhouse stays in reasonably the same location, we left tennis and basketball where they were. We did, as, as David mentioned, move track and field down to the south corner and left baseball in its original place, but reoriented it towards northeast, which is a preferred orientation for baseball. That does create a very tight grading plan between baseball and the track and field down there, but it does loosen up the rest of the site. We did lose one little league field in this scheme over the other one, but that allowed us to put the two multipurpose fields down along the western property line with the 2,000 seat bleacher and then moved two softball fields up to the existing location of the track and field. So this was the final schematic that was prepared by the, by the joint subcommittee. The field that would have sports lighting on this would be the baseball field, the track and field, the competition, multipurpose...
We'll continue to look at those opportunities to bring in non-taxpayer money. Back in Ju, June, I think it was, 2025, the City Council formed a subcommittee, two city councilors along with two school board members. Counselor Foote and Counselor Fantasy was representing the City Council. Counselor Richard Higgins represented the Concord School District. In total, they had seven meetings. Several of them had public there to give input and give ideas. Ensure the master goal was to ensure the master plan addressed all the site problems, make sure the proposed fields are the best locations in the complex, make sure the new track improves the ability to host track and field meets, increase onsite parking, ADA accessibility, and again, to continue to that, can you have the master plan built in phases? Real quickly, the same things. The subcommittee updated parking plan as presented in the original plan. We added about 180 parking spaces. We moved the track to a lower southwest corner of the complex. That is a grass playing field, two softball fields where the running track is right now, new fieldhouse. The fieldhouse has four team rooms, public bathroom, concessions, and equipment storage. That was one of the wants from the athletes. New maintenance building, new concession bathroom. And the subcommittee also expressed support for the city to look into purchasing the state land to the west for potential future parking needs going forward. Turn it back over to Chris to talk about the...
Thanks, Dave. So this plan was a result of the conversations that we had with the, with the joint subcommittee and some of the direction that, that we took. It does a couple of things. One is it expands significantly the parking along the east side up near South Fruit Street by 180 spaces. From the 128, it adds 180, so it gets up to about 300, more than doubling the amount of parking on-site, while still including bus and parent pickup drop-off areas and handicap parking and accessibility. The fieldhouse stays in reasonably the same location. We left tennis and basketball where they were. We did, as David mentioned, move track and field down to the south corner and left baseball in its original place, but reoriented it towards northeast, which is a preferred orientation for baseball. It does create a very tight grading plan between baseball and the track and field down there, but it does loosen up the rest of the site. We did lose one little league field in this scheme over the other one, but that allowed us to put the two multipurpose fields down along the western property line with the 2,000-seat bleacher, and then moved two softball fields up to the existing location of the track and field. So this was the final schematic that was prepared by the, by the joint subcommittee. The field that would have sports lighting on this would be the baseball field, the track and field, the competition multipurpose field, and then the competition soft, one of the competition softball fields. Back to David. I'm happy to take any questions. We have to go to phasing.
And this is one of the phasing options that VHB came up with. We can go over that a little bit for...
Sure, yeah. Looking at the track, putting that in first in the bottom right-hand corner allows us to really start looking at the grading and bringing up that lower level grades and taking those, essentially those three fields off on the bottom offline, raising the grade to be able to get the drainage in, and kind of working on a clockwise rotation around. So taking that track out then allows the softball to also get constructed as well, while expanding the parking to, to get that in for the opening of the new track. Phase two, looking at the, kind of how the muddies would all be split up as well as the, the construction goes around, saving some of the, the building construction to the second phase, along with the baseball construction as well. And then the, the final phase would be potentially resurfacing of the, the tennis and basketball courts.
And again, this is updated budget projections at a master plan level. Again, the next phase would be $1.2 million for final design and permitting. During the final design process, we would get more granular into the costs. So it would be, you know, 30% to 40% design. We'd be able to get firmer numbers than just a planning stage. Again, phasing construction costs, we kind of went into, to the requirement safety issue fields versus the new buildings and team rooms. Projected operating costs are $31 million if you did everything at once. We're not proposing, we, construction costs, we would not be proposing that amount of expense all at once. And then, next steps, next Monday, going to the Concord School District with the, the same, the same presentation to kind of give them an update where we're at, where the subcommittee stands. The subcommittee did make a recommendation to approve the plan as presented, the last one. We would have to continue to work with the City Council, the City School Board on how to jointly fund the $1.2 million for final design and permitting. The city in this year's budget, FY26, we do have funds approved. We have a project approved at $750,000 with the city share, with the other 750 being donations, but it cannot, has to be matched with other dollars before we get approved. That is, that money is there in FY26. In this year's budget, we had estimated phase, the design and permitting phase at 1.5 million. It's actually 1.2, so it's a little bit less. Also, during the final design and permitting phase, we would have to develop new operating costs. We do have more fields with lights. There's new staff. There's new equipment. You know, if you put in the bathrooms, then team rooms, there's going to be more janitorial. There's more supplies and stuff. So we would pull all that together as part of that process. And then, once funding is approved, final design and permitting, it is 12 months. So we have some tracks going to be offline this month, if we have other items coming down. Best case, it's a 12-month design process even before we come back to try to talk about funding and how we pay our grants or sponsorships and all that good stuff. So that's the end of the report. We do have everything online, just in case anybody is listening from home. All the public meetings are online. All the PowerPoints are online. We have links to all the minutes for the subcommittee from our website. So everything's there in case anybody would like to look it up.
Questions? Counselor Ford?
I bet you know what I'm going to ask. Have, have the discussions been had, the split of who's paying for it? If they have not been had, when will they be had and who will be having those discussions?
That would be a city administration question. No discussions.
When will that, when is that in this next steps process?
Whatever the council wants it to be. Counselor Brown?
Yeah, so this just feels really crazy because the middle school still has not, or the school board has not put out the numbers for the middle school, and it's $155 million. Now, I didn't participate in the earlier report or whatnot, but if people look at the tax impact for a $45.5 million project, that's $281 on a $500,000 home. The middle school, look, using that same math, that's an additional $960. This would then be another $211. Our residents, their wages are not increasing as fast as we are setting up projects. This just feels crazy. We can't, I feel like we can't approve anything if we don't know what the middle school numbers are. We don't, and we have the revaluation. Other communities, the manufactured homes, they saw their tax bill triple. We're not going to see that until next year. After we've approved all these things and construction has started, this is catastrophic. This is devastating. I was looking at mobile homes in Ward Five, currently assessed at $99,000.
Counselor, do you have any questions about the proposal?
I'm saying that we have to table this until we get the numbers, the finances from the school district.
Are you making a motion, Counselor?
I'm making a motion that we table this.
All right, is there a second?
Um...
Motion fails for lack of a second. Counselor Schultz?
Well, that was confusing because, for a number of reasons. I'm also mindful of the time. I might have seconded it, and this goes to a bigger point. There was pushback on any resistance earlier when we were discussing the police headquarters, and yet, when are we supposed to ask the difficult questions? Is it only on one-on conversations with each other separately? Because I have some real, I, just out of genuine pure ignorance on my part...
Please ask.
Okay. Because I don't know that this is a fair question to y'all, although maybe it is. I feel like, my understanding from my experience serving on the Everett Arena Board is that the nature of kids' sports have dramatically changed from what it was when I was a kid, when everybody could play in multiple teams, whatever, that now it's moved to these sort of, and again, I don't understand this world, traveling teams where people sort of, at a very, very young age, pick a sport and then are sort of shoehorned into these teams that are essentially more for-profit than they are public school teams, if I understand it correctly. That's a world I don't understand and how that, this impacts that. I'm concerned for kids in sports. I realize I'm not on the school board, so that's a separate conversation, but that does concern me on what is public money being spent on, on behalf of the council. I also care about the fact that there's another school district in Concord, Pennacook, and I have concerns about the payment that those residents of Concord would face for a school board that isn't theirs. And I just would like to hear more of the points that I realize you're not addressing, which is how the heck do we pay for that? So I guess really my biggest question is, what is the implication in the changing of youth sports that impacts this to these, what used to be public school teams to now these traveling sort of for-profit teams? I feel like that's a Counselor Fantasy question.
Counselor Fantasy, you're on the spot.
Four minutes.
Four minutes on the spot.
Two.
Ah, where to begin? So I think this is a place of recreation for everybody. I think if there are for-profit groups that are going to be using it, there's a field charge associated with that for all of the various fields. There, there is revenue potential with respect to, for example, in the not-so-distant past, we had a baseball field that was very high quality. You might have seen it in our consent agenda. We hosted the Babe Ruth World Series. We used to have the Quarry Dogs there. The conditions of Memorial Field have deteriorated very rapidly. We used to host NHI, AIA tournaments all the time because Concord's pretty centrally located. They will not send anything to us anymore. So I think the plan, which I thank Counselor Foote for being an excellent chairman of the, of the committee, worked really hard to try and figure out a way to modernize and find some efficiencies with how we would actually do the programming. So for example, Counselor Foote was one of the ones to suggest that if we do two multipurpose fields with sort of a grass field in between, we'd have essentially a lay-down area to be able to do those two fields at the same time and have some efficiencies in doing that. That's also the area in which we've got to do most of the drainage work is in the southwest corner, because that's the lowest area and it's where we've got sort of wetlands the closest. One of the reasons we talked about moving sort of those really high-traffic areas to that corner was, number one, if we're going to have space that's available on a, you know, 365, not quite 24 hours a day, but you know, significant hours a day, we don't want to have an impact on neighbors. And if you see where the football field is right now and the lights are shining, there's a house right behind there. There's a couple houses right in that neighborhood. So part of what we want to do is minimize the potential impact on the neighborhood. If you move the multipurpose fields to the southwest corner, the only thing they're next to is a cornfield and a church parking lot. So we thought that would be a significant improvement for the neighborhood. The cornfield, you know, we flagged as potential future parking in the future because, you know, one of the complaints that I'm, I'm sure Counselor McLaughlin has heard from some of her constituents is, you know, when you've got, I think the spring's probably the worst. You've got a track meet, a tennis match, a baseball game, adult softball, and a Little League game all going on at the same time, which happens probably three to four nights a week at least. There is not nearly enough parking between onsite, the street, and the archives. So one of the things that we talked a lot about was trying to get as much parking as we could onsite, recognizing that this plan that you're looking at does not solve all the parking issues, but thinking, you know, 10, 20, 40 years down the road, where is excellent source of potential parking? Well, to us, it would be for these cornfields that are, you know, potentially access state property. You could create a new entrance point off of Langley Parkway and have sort of a new gateway into sort of your, your big field. So a lot of this was thinking, I mean, as you pressed on the first slide, this, I think the first donation was in 1926. So we were taking a long view of trying to figure out what, what are going to be the needs of the community for a recreation space over the next 100 years, and how do you orient it in such a way that it will have minimal impact or minimize the impact on the neighborhood, increase central parking, and increase potential playing opportunities. So by going with two turf fields and a grass field that are multipurpose, you're going to be able to have field hockey and lacrosse and soccer and football and all of these things. And who knows, there's probably going to be, you know, sorry, there's going to be a bunch of sports in the future.
Chair will entertain a motion to continue the meeting beyond 11 o'clock.
Second?
We've been seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
The chair is in doubt. Roll call.
I'm going to start with Mayor Champlin.
Uh, yes.
Counselor Fantasy?
No.
Counselor Foote?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
No.
Counselor Horn?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
No.
Counselor Kretovic?
No.
Counselor Kurtz?
No.
Counselor McLaughlin?
No.
Counselor McNamara?
No.
Counselor Slasher?
No.
Counselor Schultz?
No.
Counselor Sekup?
No.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Brown?
No.
The motion fails.
Okay, then we will reconvene tomorrow at 7:00 to continue the meeting. And I hope...
Tomorrow?
Well?
Do you want to reconvene on the 24th when we're already meeting?
All right. We'll reconvene on Wednesday at 7:00.
Mr. Mayor, I have a timed announcement.
No.
As you're leaving, you may want to hear that there is a listening session at the community center with all of your state reps.
Hold it.
I thought the meeting was over and I'm just speaking.
Ward, Ward, do you want to continue this meeting in two weeks?
Two weeks, please.
All right. 24th. All right, thank you. Meeting is recessed. I'm sorry, a motion to, a motion to recess.
So we'll...
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No. I would like to make an announcement for the two people who are still listening. Listening, and the microphones are on.